All right, good evening, Holliston, and welcome to the March 27th, 2025 meeting of the Holliston School Committee. Before we begin our official agenda, which I also need to bring up, just a couple of quick things. I first just want to address some rumors about staff cuts that were going about yesterday. We are going to be doing a budget presentation today. I just want to be very, very clear with everyone that there are not going to be any staff cuts for budget or high school schedule reasons or any schedule reasons. No one is going to be losing their jobs because of the budget or because of the schedule, period. Okay? And that was true yesterday, the day before yesterday, and still today. Secondly, can you just bring up that page? So, we sent out an email five years ago. Well, how many days ago was it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so two days ago, okay. Just to update the community on some things that we have been working on with the HFT regarding a potential new schedule, I just want to bring that up quickly. No one's going to be able to see it because of the fine print, but so earlier today, this afternoon, just a few hours ago, we did receive a counterproposal from the HFT. Due to the time, we haven't had a ton of time to review it, but we have given it a high-level review and, you know, we say thank you very much, we appreciate it, we believe it is a step in the right direction, we think we are close to having an agreement on a seven-drop-two schedule. And we will be, you know, having further conversations as soon as we can get all of our thoughts together, but, you know, just to be clear to the community, if we are able to ratify this schedule, it would be for the 2026-2027 school year. So, we're not talking about a change for the schedule next year here, we're talking about the 26-27 school year. Furthermore, in our letter on Monday, Tuesday, you know, we did commit to returning to the block schedule for next year if the seven-drop-two schedule is ratified. All right, well, at this point, it's too small, so just pull it down.
Get rid of it.
So, with that said, we'll get into our official agenda. So, at this point, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from last week, in addition to a number of executive session minutes, as well as three executive session minutes that are partially redacted and are, we're approving for release of those redacted versions, in addition to warrants and some gifts.
Moved by Dawn.
Second.
Can I, just want to ask, those executive session minutes are ones that we had already approved for release in executive session?
No, you don't approve, you don't.
I don't know that we had voted on them in.
You do not approve minutes in executive session. You do not approve, you do not approve executive session minutes in executive session. So, but let me just take a step back for a second there, because I did admit something, Sarah is participating online, and so before we get to any actual things, I just need to read the remote meeting statement pursuant to the Governor's, and it's all updated anyway now, but pursuant to the Governor's July 16th, 2022 Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL, C30A, paragraph 20, the Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting, the audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Wetaun's website as soon as possible in accordance with helping to keep the public informed of actions during this meeting. At this time, a roll call of attendance will be taken. Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Here.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Can't hear you, sir.
It lit up, so she's not muted.
She's saying something.
You probably can't hear it.
Sarah, can you try again?
Can you put your thumb up? Or, oh, there's no sound down at the bottom of the computer.
Right here.
You know, Doug.
There you go.
All right, Sarah, can you try one more time?
Hold on, Sarah.
Dan, I think you got to change the speaker on Zoom. Ready to hit audio?
All right. One more time, Sarah.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, there you go.
Yay!
Okay, and I am here as well. So, we are now officially called to order.
Can I just ask that you hold out the executive session, please, and we can do it next time?
So, these have been requested by the town clerk. We are supposed to approve executive session minutes in open session.
Do you want to discuss the content of them?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
We can hold one week?
But we're not meeting until the 10th.
Well, then we could always schedule a meeting in between to discuss it.
So, you want to withhold all the executive session minutes?
Well, they're not linked, so.
They're in the executive session folder.
Any of the folders.
Let me show you. What if we go back to this?
Just go back to it.
Go back to it, give her a chance to review it during.
Sure. All right, reports from our student representatives.
Maybe if you're better than you care. Here, right up here.
Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Senior showcase was last Wednesday, spring sports started this week, there's a field trip for the arts department, they're going to Boston and doing a bunch of different things there. The French immersion students participating in the French exchange program left last week for France. The global citizens program trip to Italy is going to be during April break, and sophomore and freshman semi was last week and went well.
One of our juniors from the Holliston Chorus and Band Department, Adele Bogus, is going to State's Chorus Festival. We had a presentation about an addiction survivor yesterday, his name was Stephen Hill, and that went very well. 10th grade MCAS English was Monday, the 24th, and Tuesday, the 25th. Investment club with Mr. Mullins started last week, term three ends next week, and AP finals are also next week. There's also been some confusion about the AP science classes and how some of them are two credits now. It's just been going around the school.
We will talk about that in a little bit when we get to the program of studies, so you can, Mr. List can address that, because we actually just had a question about that. So, you're not alone. Were you able to cover everything? Okay, perfect, thank you very much. All right, now we'll get to school committee individual comments.
I don't want to steal your thunder, but I did attend Grease this weekend, the last showing, this Sunday. It was nothing short of incredible. Really, our students have immense talents, and that's clearly demonstrated, and then the investment we're putting in theater and the arts is clearly apparent. Full house, I believe, every showing. Surprised to show up at Sunday, and there was people actually standing, you didn't hear that, Chief Cassidy, but it was a great show, and I look forward to the next one.
No comments for me?
No comment.
No comment for me? No comment.
I too enjoyed Grease, my daughter was in it, but, you know, I appreciate you bringing it up as a more, you know, independent.
She did great, everyone did.
We do need, yes. All right, so we will now get to public comment.
Check online.
If there are people that wish to make public comment that are on Zoom, if you could just simply raise your hand, and I will sort of rotate back and forth between the room, and then those are on the call, can someone let them in?
I love those.
Okay. So, again, if you're on Zoom and wish to make public comment, please use the raise-hand function. I don't think anyone's on their phone, but I think that's useful. Okay. We're going to do two minutes for public comment. We've got a lot of public comments, so we're going to try to stick to the two minutes, and we will start with Ann Butler.
For public comment, I'll just raise my hand and give you a 30-second warning, too, okay?
We do appreciate you sticking to the two minutes.
I'm Ann Butler, 7th Indian Ridge Road. I'm one of many parents who took the time to review and submit detailed feedback on the multiple schedule offerings that were subject to being stopped from progressing, and an AB schedule posed as the way forward. I attended the school committee meeting two weeks ago and listened to many students express concerns over the AB schedule, that it was inadequate, that it was rushed, and there was no communication. Mr. Alfred, you invited some, but not all, students who spoke during public comment to share what they would do to improve an AB schedule. One student presented a thoroughly thought-out option which was glossed over. The main takeaway from public commenters was to put a halt to the rapid turnaround. The administration advised that the technological backend was underway, and anything other than AB was dismissed. Last week, at Mr. List's information session, there was more of the same. My concern specifically has been with the deterioration from a collaborative approach to one which has seemingly been unilaterally decided upon by the school committee and deemed to be meeting the demands of the teacher contract. I followed up with Mr. List and was encouraged to hear that he had solid plans, improvement plans, within the parameters of the AB. That same day, an email indicating that AB is now in question was issued. When will this back-and-forth stop? When will students be able to focus on their studies without wondering how their day-to-day will look next year and beyond? And when will our school leaders be in a position to act upon directives with confidence? The mindset that AB is the only option has been drilled into us. Why are we facing another change, and how long before another option is on the table? Every time this happens, our confidence and trust falls with our leaders. My message is simple: for us to slow down, to do the due diligence, to cover every angle, and to focus on the issues at hand. We need stability and focus, and to provide a solid education for all our students in the way they learn the best.
Thank you.
No one on Zoom? Again, if you're on Zoom and wish to make public comment, please raise your hand, use the raising, the raise-hand function. Barbara Ryan?
May I have four minutes? I have a PTO.
No.
Nope? Okay, I'll go first.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm going to pass this to you all if you don't mind.
If you want for the PTO, we can add you to a future agenda if you'd like to make a PTO update.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of comments, because I just want to thank the community and keep one of those.
But Barbara, reach out if you do want to do a PTO update.
Yes, thank you. Barbara Ryan, working here in one place. I just first want to say thank you for having me this evening, thank you to the leadership that's here, thank you to students and teachers that are here tonight. Quickly, I really want to thank the generosity of this community. We have raised everything we need to meet for the PTO for the 24- to 36-month runway we've set for ourselves, and in two weeks, our generous community not only performed about 2,200 acts of kindness, we raised $51,000. So, thank you, and that directly goes to the support of our enrichment programs, supplies, all these good things. So, I will come back and tell you more, thank you. I come from a place rooted in community and curiosity. I am trying to understand the origin story of how we got to AB schedule, or whatever schedule is now being thought about, seven minus two, and I still am trying to wrap my head around what that really means. I'm a product of public education and educators, so I believe in process, and I also hear equity audit, but I think the origin is the NEASC, and there are four, five priority areas, and four of them: data-driven decision-making, stakeholder communication involvement, systemic collaboration, and, again, dated decision-making are one, two, and four. And the high school bell schedule certainly was part of that recommendation. In my professional life, it feels like a soup sandwich, or trying to nail Jell-O to the wall. And so, I think slowing down, I know there's a one April in the teacher contract that if, if, the parties will reconvene in an effort to work out remaining issues to bring back for another vote, ratification votes will be held by this April. I don't think anything's ever set in stone, I think respecting the voices of students and teachers and educators who are in the trenches doing the work need to be heard. I also know we can do better.
Thank you.
And I thank you for considering all the voices here, and I think we need to slow down and take pause and really find a thoughtful way forward. Thank you.
Sarah, is it Sachi? Is it, oh, there it is.
I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, but I also want to say that I still don't know what's going on. As a student of the school, I feel like this is unacceptable, though there have been, I think, more of an effort to include us in at least some decisions that have been made already, I still don't feel like that's enough. Through watching this meeting, as it's just now happening, and watching the last one on YouTube or whatever, I heard through this, with the emails also that I've sent, conversation and everything, I heard a lot about rumors that students have been hearing, but rumors only happen in the absence of knowledge, and I really don't feel like the students have been kept in the loop enough. I've heard certain things, and then I've heard contradicting things, and I've heard just now that the schedule is being pushed to next year, which is what we wanted, but we also didn't, I didn't know that was happening. I've gotten the emails and stuff and everything, but I don't feel like we've been incorporated in decisions, like where were we when we needed to hear about the HFT coming up with something, or why haven't students been incorporated as much even when last meeting this was addressed? And I, I just don't feel like this is fair, that these decisions affect us the most, but yet we haven't been here for any of the decisions, really?
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing, nothing has changed right now.
Yes, but it was going to, correct?
No, no, we're still with the AB.
Okay, but it's being pushed to not this upcoming school year?
I appreciate your confusion, though it's, it's not easy to keep track, but right now, there's multiple things going on, and so currently, we're proceeding with the AB. We are also having conversations with the HFT about an alternative.
For 2026.
For 2026, yeah. Which, if that were implemented, would eliminate the AB from next year, we'd go back to the block schedule for a year, for one last year.
Okay, I just want to say I don't feel like that has been clearly communicated to the students.
I hear you, understood, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I write poems when I'm passionate about something, and I wrote a poem, because it's easier for me to say words when I write them, so I wrote one about this, because it's stressing me out. What about the kid who sits in the back of the class, working hard to barely pass? Before, school was a place of security, now, as we grow older, is a place of scrutiny? What about the teacher pushing through three classes a day with kids who yell and berate them all day, grading until the sun no longer shines? You want to give the underpaid more as they waste their personal time? We all have issues, we all have problems, but rushing into change will never solve them. You are fixing broken glass with a sledgehammer. School is already tough for a kid like me, ADHD, depression, anxiety. I panic about one test, and now you want to add six more? What makes this seem like a fair score? My anxiety is already high, and the changes being made won't help it go by. Worries in my head keep me from focusing and paying attention, getting home to drown myself in my covers, continuing this mess of my education. I wish you all would actually listen to us, because we are the ones going through it where, what happened to the trust? But like the world says, we're just kids who don't understand, even though we're trying to speak up. We are the ones, we are the ones going through this. It will affect us more than it will affect a lot of other people. I understand, I couldn't go to the last school meeting, but I watched it on the live. Someone said, well, maybe you guys should, you guys can do hard things, but why should we push into doing hard things? Currently, we're only taking four classes at a time. Pushing that up to eight will stress out so many people, including myself, and also my ADHD will mess up, because I need consistent learning, and doing that 85 minutes every other day for, for a bunch of different classes is going to be so confusing for many, many people.
Thank you.
My name is Oliver Brown, I live at 66 Winthrop Street, I'm a junior here. Two weeks ago, students came to the HSC angry and hurt by your actions as committee. We were left out of communications about our preference on which the schedule for the school should use. In fact, this committee didn't even know what the student and family consensus was on the AP schedule from the December survey in the first place. As a committee, your ignorance of our voices is unacceptable. I hope you all realize the damage that you've caused and continue to cause after many of my peers stood up against the misrepresentation of students and were ignored. Even as the HFT has presented a possible solution to the AB schedule, the email informing the community was never even sent to students. Students have also not received a chance to review and give their opinions on the schedule. My disgust for this committee cannot be put into words. The HSC is supposed to represent students and make them feel heard. Disregarding the student body the way you all have is disrespectful, disruptive, and unacceptable. Your actions have lost all and of the little respect that I already had for this committee. Since this committee has proven to be incompetent in communication with the body that it represents, I will gladly remind you all, if you cannot come with terms to terms with the fact that you are not dictators of this school, I strongly suggest finding a new position. Stop the conflict, stop the negligence, and do your jobs. Thank you.
Before I would begin, I'd like to request that you guys allow the teachers to speak their whole statements, as they solely get two minutes every two weeks to share their thoughts, and administrators and school committee can send out emails seemingly whenever they would like.
So, I'm just going to say unfortunately, we're going to keep the two minutes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Caroline Roy, and I'm a chemistry and physics teacher at Holliston High School. I had the privilege of going through the Holliston Public Schools and graduated in 2015. I received my bachelor's in chemistry and English from Holy Cross, and my master's in education from Boston College. I wanted to come back and teach in Holliston because I loved going to school here. I loved my peers, my teachers, my principals, the opportunities I was afforded because of the Holliston Innovates initiatives and the visions of a graduate, and the widespread program of studies. Being in this building was fun, motivating, and palpable, that HHS was a good place to be. That energy is no longer palpable, and it has a result of leadership and decisions being made without considering the input of key stakeholders, the students, the community, and the teachers. I do not say this to shame you or degrade you, truly, I do not. I say it to ask you, to call on you, to beg you, to do better for your students, your teachers, and the community. The narrative that is being perpetuated about the high school teachers regarding the schedule change is disingenuous, degrading, and is honestly getting out of hand. I'm making this statement tonight to remind district administrators and the school committee and members of the community that we care deeply, deeply about your kids. Not only your kids, their academic success, their emotional success, their social success. Let me be loud and clear, the teachers of Holliston High School are not opposed to a schedule change. This has been said not only in public comment, but on social media as well, although it seems like no one is listening. Let me again state that, the teachers are not opposed to a schedule change. The teachers are on the front lines of your children's education, we see them every day, we know what they're skilled at, what they need more practice with, we know if they actually did their homework the night before, if they were truly prepared for their test. The teachers have been repeatedly referred to throughout all discussions regarding the schedule change as "the HFT." Continually referring to us as an acronym makes it easy to villainize the only group of people who have firsthand knowledge and comprehension about a schedule will change and affect your children's day-to-day. If you want to speak badly about me, use my name, stop trying to blame union leadership.
Thank you, Caroline.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Rivera, I am proud to call Caroline Roy one of my former students, I recruited her to teach here, you're welcome. I have been teaching chemistry here at Holliston High School for the past 15 years, I am speaking tonight with respect to the email sent by the school committee on March 25th showing comparisons between the positions of both sides. This email fails to include the context by which the teachers came to our position. The teachers' offer of a seven-drop-two schedule with provisions necessary to do our jobs effectively is a compromised position. The majority of the staff does not even want a seven-drop-two schedule, as we believe there are better and more creative options. That schedule was offered only because you, the school committee, chose to implement an AB schedule that you admit is not ideal for students. When Principal List met with staff after your vote to move forward with the AB, he referred to it as a bag of rocks. Yet he must be so afraid for his own job that he presented it to you as a feasible option without elucidating the myriad of downsides associated with it. Let me offer you an analogy to illustrate how teachers feel about what has transpired. Putting forward this AB schedule comes off as a threat. It feels like you have put a train on the tracks, started up the engines, and aimed it right at our students, who will suffer the consequences of this choice. Offering the seven-drop-two schedule is analogous to your teachers jumping in front of that train on behalf of our students. Your email stating that teachers should accept what you believe to be a reasonable counterproposal is like saying, gee, the train is going to run over all of these students unless the teachers come to their senses and do something about it, all the while pretending that you aren't the train conductors who could simply throw the brake and stop the train. I will send you the entirety of my comments, and I'll move to the end. I don't think that what the teachers have proposed is unreasonable. I am asking you to please accept the teachers' offer and stop the train.
Alex Strom, English teacher and union vice president. Last March, this committee asked the high school principal if he thought an AB schedule was a good idea, and we're told no. I can't help but notice that this time around, the committee did not ask if you thought it was a good idea, simply if it was feasible, suggesting they did not prioritize if it should happen, just if it could be done. Well, here we are. Earlier this week, department leaders were informed that juniors and seniors would be permitted to take one fewer class, perhaps as a way to ease their transition into a new schedule. This looks like nothing more than a bribe to placate students who are angry with an abrupt change, and I can't imagine the committee will support this idea after we heard how important it was that we add 15 minutes onto the school day to increase time on learning, only to now turn around and cut kids loose as they haggle over a few minutes of prep time with the teachers. It's a liability issue, and it lowers the bar. Earlier today, students informed teachers that some science courses would now be two credits next year instead of one. Not only does this require restructuring of schedules created just one day earlier and manufacture barriers to accessibility, but more importantly, it demonstrates that the administration is making up solutions as they go and do not have the foresight to anticipate issues the AB schedule creates before they arise. This is week one of scheduling. They say to measure twice and cut once. We, however, have discarded the ruler in exchange for two buzzsaws, and it won't be the school committee who has to spend their days cleaning up the resulting mess come September. While the seven-drop-two schedule proposed by the teachers is not our first choice, we recognize the stress and chaos that the school committee's forcing of an AB schedule is having upon the students, and we are seeking a compromise that is in their best interest. The only concession I've seen thus far from the HSC is maybe pushing back the schedule change a year, but at this point, that's not a concession, that's common sense. The AB schedule is not contingent upon any other agreement, and can easily be delayed or rescinded as we continue to work to find common ground on what's best for students, which I hope can be our focus rather than one group of adults trying to score a win over the other. That's why I join 98%. That's why I join ninety-eight percent of responding Federation members who are opposed to the school committee's decision to implement the A B schedule at the high school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and ask that the school committee reverse their decision. Thank you.
Ann Canoni. I'm a resident in Holliston. I feel like I've spent my life here with you many weeks, and I shouldn't have to. But I really feel strongly about advocating for our students, and I just feel like people aren't listening. I don't have anything prepared. I didn't write anything up. I was walking to the school, and I said to myself, I am gonna speak tonight because I'm embarrassed right now to be a member of this community. I've lived here for almost forty years. I've worked in the school system for twenty-five years, and it's never been like this. It's like we're throwing spaghetti against the wall to see what's gonna stick, and it's not okay. After listening to the students at the last meeting, like, you have to hear them. You have to hear what they're saying. There's stress, anxiety. We don't know what's going on. How are they gonna know what's going on? Again, people have run it up this morning. I have my ninth graders saying to me, Mrs. Canoni, AP Physics is gonna run two semesters, two credits, so I have to switch my schedule. Like, there is no solid plan in place, and you have to understand that. I actually built the scheduling system. I built the Power School scheduling system. We are so far behind to even make this happen for September. We, I can remember Martha DeVoe being at meetings saying, like, why don't I have my kid's schedule? At the end of July? We don't have the infrastructure? I don't believe that the infrastructure's been started because administration just went to training last week. There's just no way that it's gonna get done, and I just, like everybody else.
Thirty seconds, Sam.
We need to slow it down. We made the decision for school start time changes very quickly. We're changing this. You guys are changing the math algebra at eighth grade. Cambridge School System, who has a lot more money than us, has tried to change that. They can't do it. We need solid plans, and if we don't have solid plans, it's the students that suffer. And all these decisions that we are making should be about the students, and they're not. And I just wish you'd consider slowing down the high school schedule change and the math program. Thank you.
Please, Kelly. Two sixteen Rolling Meadow Drive. I just wanted to be another voice of concern at the rate at which we're moving to make such a huge change and big decision for our children. I know we all sit here, and you work very hard for your kids. That's why you're sitting on this committee. That's why we're all here, to embrace our kids, take care of our kids, educate our kids the best that we can. I don't have all the data about the schedule. I don't have all the background about why the schedule's being A B, seven-drop-two. All I know is that asking these teachers to move at the rate we're asking just does not make feasible sense to me as a parent. I know that my own children are looking at this schedule, trying to figure out how they're gonna wrap their heads around it by the fall. We can't ask teachers to, without pay, plan a whole new curriculum for each of their classes between now and September. They need a year, at least. And I really implore you to just consider the idea of, us, we've had this schedule for a long time. One more year isn't going to make or break. And enforcing the only way that this becomes a possibility, as if we ratify a contract and come to an agreement, feels like actually our children are being put at stake. They're not what's important. It's just about ratifying a contract that becomes important as a vehicle for forcing a schedule. So I'm just asking you to really consider the gravity of a decision, which will inevitably, if we force it through for the fall of two thousand and twenty-five, just hurt our kids. And I am open to the idea of a different schedule here that may be the right path forward, but let's do the diligence to make sure we're doing it in a way that's going to be effective for these wonderful people who my children show up for every day because they adore, and for our kids, because that's what we're all here for: our kids.
Randall McBride, Junior Holliston High School, one oh four Hanlon Road. Coming straight from work, I haven't prepared a long statement for tonight, but I did want to ask one question. I don't want it to come off with any disrespect or to feel like a jab at the Holliston School Committee, but rather a question to make all involved think hard, give a clear answer. And this is the question: Why haven't students' and teachers' voices been heard in this battle for a schedule? Why have the most important people, those who show up to educate, help, and sometimes the highlight of a student's day, had their voices heard? And why have those who it will affect on the day-to-day also been overlooked? This isn't a statement to speak out, but it's a statement to get answers. So I'll ask again: why?
Good evening. Full disclosure, I do not live in Holliston any longer. I served on two strategic planning committees while I was here. I lived here for thirty-seven years. I happen to be the mother of two teachers in Holliston: Caroline Roy, who you just heard from, and my daughter Victoria Roy, who's a math teacher in the high school. Both of my daughters went to school here. The reason, as Caroline noted, she returned, was because of teachers like Amanda Rivera. In full disclosure, my husband was a beloved teacher in Foxborough for thirty-seven years. He died seven years ago, and I still, to this day, fund four scholarships every year for teachers, for students, I'm sorry, because I believe in public education. And I believe in what these teachers bring for these students. They are the lifeline. You know, when my husband died, I got messages from students who told me the reason they were not either in jail or an addict or dead was because of what my husband provided for them. He was an art teacher who taught these kids above and beyond everything about life and education. And that's what you have with these teachers in Holliston. They are fabulous. They care about this community. They care about these kids. I am just asking you, please, to listen to them, to listen to these students, and do what they are asking you to do. Please, if you need to, bring in a professional mediator. I'm a lawyer by training, okay? I can tell you that they actually do help. You need to come, thank you. You need to come to closure on this. You are hurting the town. You are hurting these students, and you are hurting these teachers, the backbone of this community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Just to be clear, you don't need to be a resident to come to public comment, so you're always welcome.
I know, and thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted, I want full disclosure. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Andrea?
She signed up on paper.
No, I gotta, I gotta text that she wanted to speak. Okay. Then we'll move to our, I think, is there anyone else on Zoom who wants, who wishes to make public comment? I can't, can you?
Can you put that? Somebody who's ready to dance.
No, I, I've got someone, yeah. Yeah. So, so can you undo the trans? Can you just, like, close? All right. And then, Megan, you can unmute.
Hi, sorry. I was hoping to make a public comment about the proposed math changes. Is that allowed right now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to strongly oppose the proposed changes to the middle school math curriculum, specifically the move towards de-leveling, the elimination, and the elimination of advanced math courses. As a parent of two elementary school students here in Holliston and a ninth-grade physics teacher in a neighboring district, I believe this proposal would not be in the best interest of our students and could have long-term negative consequences for their academic growth and future success. First and foremost, offering advanced math courses in middle school gives students who are ready for more challenging material the chance to really thrive. These courses let them dive into more complex concepts, build a stronger understanding of math, and develop critical thinking skills that will be essential for success in high school and beyond. Taking away these opportunities would limit the potential for many students to reach their full academic potential. From my perspective as a high school physics teacher, I see firsthand how fundamental math skills are to success in more advanced subjects such as physics. Middle school is a crucial time for students to build the mathematical foundation that will support their success in high school and beyond. By eliminating advanced math courses, we risk depriving students of the chance to develop the skills necessary for success in higher-level STEM subjects and future careers in fields like engineering, technology, and data science. Furthermore, the notion that de-leveling would benefit all students is misguided. While it's important to ensure that all students have success, I'm sorry, have access to high-quality instruction, we must also recognize that students have different learning needs and abilities. A one-size-fits-all approach where all students are placed in the same math class regardless of their skill level may result in STEM students being left behind, while others who are capable of excelling are not challenged. It's crucial that we maintain opportunities for students who are ready to advance coursework, who are ready for advanced coursework to continue to grow and challenge themselves. I urge the school committee to reconsider any proposal, this proposal, and explore alternative solutions that would allow students to pursue math courses at appropriate levels, whether that be advanced for those who are ready or with additional support for those who may need the extra help. It's essential that we support all students regardless of their academic level by providing the opportunities and resources they need to succeed. Thank you.
All right, and I think finally, we have Alon.
My name's Alon Yari. I'm in two seven three Hollis. Quite a bit of passion this evening. I'm not here to talk about the same subject that everybody else has been. I'm speaking for myself this evening and for several of my neighbors, although not all of my neighbors, I wanna make that clear. I'm not representing everybody that lives near the high school. On this evening's agenda is the KFCA policy, which deals with the field and part of the way the field is used. Coincidentally, in this past week, one of my neighbors was detained by the police after trying to go down and speak with the coaches about what he thought was a violation of the policy. There's been, the policy allows for twenty night game events during the year. Not counting night games this past year, there's been over twenty uses of the field at night. And that's why, when the lights were on again this past week, he went down to talk with them, and they wound up calling the police rather than listening to him, which is part of why I'm here this evening. I've spoken with quite a few of the neighbors, and the lights aren't the issue for us necessarily. The big question is, what comes with students being allowed to use the fields at night? There's a certain amount of disturbance and noise when you've got a lot of kids out in the field, sometimes out of supervision at night. It comes with a lot that goes with it. We would like to be included in the discussions of how the policy that is being discussed this evening and otherwise, and we ask to be included in that in the future. If you could delay the decisions that you make tonight. I think that with our input, you may find a lot more relaxed of a policy than there was allowing more use of the athletic field in general. What we really are looking for at the end of the day is respect and courtesy from the students and from the users of the field. Thank you.
Thank you, Alon. Before we move on, David, you just wanna quickly address the science credits? Or you wanna do that later?
Yeah, so we... I didn't want to come up to the mic.
Sorry.
And looking at all of the schedules they brought forward, one of the concerns have been about the, the lackability to get labs completed for science classes. And in some of the work that we're doing on the back end to build the schedule, what we were able to do was fix many of the issues that existed within Power School and our, the technical piece. And so we're breaking out the, the AP sciences so that they would have an AP science component in the AP labs, because no matter what schedules you run, AP sciences, like, if you go across to any schools around, AP sciences have AP lab time built in. So we need to consider that in, no matter what schedule we offer. If you look at something like right now comparable, even though the AP exam is done, you have something like, it's called like ChemApps, like, right now. And many of the chem students take that. So we had to look at doing that, and as we build these components, we have to see those impacts across. And so when you look at addressing some of those times, I went and spoke with the science teachers, and one of the components that we're gonna have to have in our schedule, no matter what is decided eventually, are these AP labs, and making up some of that time for that to happen. So we were working on building that piece into the AP schedule. And as we do that, we have to make adjustments across the board, but that's part of this, the build process. And that part was built in, and then we made those pieces. But the back end, the back end of the A B, like, the technical piece, the back end of the A B has all been built. So that's ready to, that's ready to go. And then we're meeting with students next week, myself, the other admin counselors, in order to go through and look at any sort of, give that final, here is what we have, here is everything everybody needs to look at, here's how your schedules are gonna look, and make sure everybody's on the same page with what they need to do with their schedules.
Okay, but specifically in Power School right now, many of the AP sciences might say two credits as opposed to a one-credit course.
One point five, as opposed to one, as opposed to one point five.
Okay, but if you were gonna register next year for AP Chemistry or AP Bio, it would say two credits, right?
Right now, yes, it's two credits.
What would that actually look like?
So that would be all year with the lab component, because we have to build that into the, we have to build that in no matter what. And so we had, part of the idea behind the build and the work that has been going on behind the scenes to make this A B work, because this has all been built out already. Like, the, in the back end of Power School, that stuff, that part's done. Like, the A B build piece, that, that part's been done. What we have to be able to do is be able to use it and adjust it. So that part is there. So when they build that, so, and then we look at the impact of that across the board against students. And so the, the students will have to go on, those students, and make possible adjustments. And then we have about three hundred and thirty kids who are fully registered, and then those students, they'd have to make adjustments to what their requests, their requests are.
So you're saying that you would have AP Chem every day for the entire year?
Yeah, we'd have to pull, yes, we'd have to have AP Chem for the entire, every day for the entire year, yeah.
Okay. What about other one-point-five classes, like an AP Statistics or an AP Calculus? What would that look like?
So, those classes would still be the three-term classes. And again, the reason for that is looking at the, the need for the lab-based components across the board and looking at what other schools are doing. We have to be able to adjust our credits for that.
Okay, so what would it look like?
That would be the, that would be every day for a semester, every other day, second semester.
Okay.
Can I ask Mr. List a question?
Who was? Oh, hi.
I know there's been a lot of frustration for students just because, especially those who've already, like, selected their schedules for next year, having to go back and change that because we've changed it to two credits. Is there any possible way that the deadline for course selection can be extended to give students more time to choose their after?
Yes.
Oh.
And just so you know, in terms of, like, the class selection piece, the numbers are looking on par with what they would have been in the current, in the current, like, the, the students, the students, courses they're selecting look on par from what they did in previous years. But that's the, that's all the backend piece, and that part's all been built out. But that's all the backend piece, and that part's all been built out.
Great, thank you. Bringing it back up. One second. Are you ready to go back to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, I still would like to pull that up.
What?
I still would like to pull that up. So typically, when we have executive session minutes, we review them in executive session and then decide if these are accurate, and then we say, are we going to bring them that and then we go. So we didn't review them in executive session. I didn't bring them up because I thought we were going to be doing that in executive session.
But aren't you having changes that you're going to discuss?
So maybe, yes. So can you explain to me what the urge, I don't know the backstory of the urgency here, so I'm trying to understand why, why.
There's been requests for information about what we discussed on the 10th.
Okay.
We can hold it one more week because...
Well, it's going to be till 10th.
Right. Unless we have a meeting before that.
Unless you have a meeting before that.
So she's just asking for, so again, like I wasn't even able to go to like three, go through all of them to go, oh, we're going to discuss these. My understanding was we were going to discuss the accuracy of the minutes and then decide what ones we need to keep, what we wanted to retain, and which ones we wanted to put out. That's...
Okay, I mean, just...
If we could call it down to like three or four executive minutes, and we took a break before we adjourned for the night, do you want to see if you have changes for it, or do you want to hold it for two weeks?
I just, I don't, I would like to just hold it, but you can vote, not, go ahead and vote without me then, I'll abstain from it.
What if you want to do?
Can I say something?
Yeah. Go ahead, Sarah.
Of course, we can hear you.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I just, so, just based on all of that, do we have this on our agenda for the next couple of meetings just to, as things move along, so that we could actually vote on whatever?
We haven't set any agenda yet for the next meeting, so we...
Could it be on, like for the, I don't, are we having the third and the 10th?
Right now, we're...
And the 17th or?
Right now, we're going to be the 10th and the 17th, but we can also...
I'd like to see, I'd like to see something about high school schedule potential move, just to have that as a placeholder.
Okay.
So Sarah, we were just talking about the executive session minutes.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
No, you're...
Is there any reason why they can't wait until the 10th?
I mean, ultimately, no. It's just that, you know, the time clerk is asked.
Right, but my point is, if it was that important to get them out, why not communicate that separately to us? Like, I didn't, I didn't know that, and I assumed we were going to talk about the executive session minutes, because we didn't get a chance to review them for accuracy beforehand, and then we're just voting for them? I'm like, I don't, I don't get that. Like, there's no access for me to do that.
I hear you. I mean, I think the agenda listed...
So if it was something you wanted us to do, then that would have been important for me to know ahead of time, that's all I'm saying.
No, and I know the agenda listed a number of minutes, but because it's really just three that we're looking to release and...
So there's three of them?
There's three. So I guess what I'm asking, can we get...
So can we pull the other ones and just let, look at those three?
Can we get through the agenda or get a little further tonight if we take like a break and you have an opportunity to review? If you have no changes, we could still...
Yeah, if it's that important, then yes, can we just pull out the, like, the most crucial ones that you need to put out?
Yes, yes.
And then we'll just hold the rest of them? That's fine, we can come back to it.
Okay. Push those off again?
We can vote on the rest of the consent agenda if you want.
No, we'll just, we'll just hold it, just don't, let me forget.
I just want to, there was a lot in public comment tonight, tonight.
Yep.
I don't want to lose the fact that personally for me, I believe we should have an April 3rd meeting, and I side with Sarah that there should be a decision on the current data schedule for next year.
Well, I think we have to see how conversations play out over the next, you know, few days.
Totally fair, both sides agree.
That's fine, but I think it's reasonable to put it on the agenda, whether we decide on to vote on it or not, it needs to be on the agenda.
Right now, we're not having an April 3rd.
Yeah, but if we have it on there as a potential vote, it just allows it...
Right, for us to have that discussion.
Correct.
No, yeah, I understand, but right now, we're not going to have an April 3rd meeting. So the question is, do we have an extra meeting? Because we were going to have an April 3rd meeting, but as a budget hearing, but that's now on the 10th.
Well, we already had...
We can discuss scheduling offline, but I'm saying, I'm not, I'll certainly put it on our next agenda that we have.
Well, I think that we already have an April 3rd, we already had an April 3rd meeting in our calendars, and we already had it.
Well, to be fair, Dan, the agenda needs to be updated because it does seem...
I understand, it was posted before we found out about the...
And if we're already doing a hearing? Right, a budget hearing on the 10th, we can still do it.
Absolutely important. We've heard the community the last two meetings.
All right, we'll figure out a time to meet so that we can discuss. Mr. Renee.
Good evening. How are you, Jerry?
All right, all right. So, let me get my screen shared here.
Oh, my screen's going to die. I was like, I didn't bring my charger because it was a silly thing.
Let's think about it.
No, no, your speaker's on, you have to turn the mute on. Are you muted?
Dan, we're muted here, we're muted there.
Jerry's muted.
I'm muted.
He's muted, but his speaker's still on, so that's weird, that's weird.
I'm muted.
Okay.
Yeah?
Then you're good now.
All right. Talk about an entrance, right? Well, thank you for having me. So, we were just here, right? I was just here about six weeks ago when we presented our mid-year updates. We kind of did a mid-year update with our principals and our central office. And I was on the calendar to kind of present, and when I was thinking about what to present, one of the things that I was reflecting on is oftentimes when we do our mid-year updates, it's jam-packed with a lot. And what you're hearing is a, an overview of a lot of check-ins of what we're doing. But what you don't get to hear is kind of a stop of a deep dive into something in particular. So what you're going to hear from me are two pieces where I'm going to kind of take you a little deeper into some meaningful work that I think is really important for you to know as school committee members about some of the work that's happening that I think really speaks to the sustainability long-term of what we're trying to move in the district. And although I think, you know, we just had some really passionate conversation here about some people that really care about this district, the work that I'm also going to be sharing with you today also speaks about some of that work. That has been three, four years in the making of people who really are passionate about the social-emotional learning, the mental health, the safe and supportive school work that's happening in our district just as well. So that's what today's about. So, so today, one of the things that, what I have on agenda today is a couple of things. I was, when I first arrived, I'm going to talk a little bit about reanchoring us. I was really intentional when I arrived, talking about safe and supportive schools, and I want to re-anchor us back in that language. And even though that language never went anywhere, I want to reintentionally just make sure that we're using that language, because I think it's going to be even more useful as we head into the climate that we're in today. The definition of what a safe and supportive school is, it brings into culmination all of the language that we're going to have to bring together in today's climate. I'm going to, one of the things that I think is really important for all school committee members to know is exactly what is a safe and supportive school MTSS leadership team doing, which is a really cross-sector team of educators, just like we had in the room today, of educators from across all of our schools who are helping me lead this work, right? I can't do this alone. This is teachers, counselors, administrators who are helping move this work. And then I'm also going to kind of give some updates on what is some of the work that's happening that came from the equity audit work, and how are we trying to embed this work into the strategic, not just only the strategic plan, but how are we embedding this work into the safe and supportive school work? And that's what I wanted to share, right? Because I think it's important as school committee that you have a breadth of what that work is looking like. And when we did our updates, it was more of an overview, right? So that's really what today's about. So, one of the things that I think you've seen, and this came as a direct recommendation from, not just audits, not just from the equity audit, but also came from DESI when they did a curriculum audit, but also when they came and did an audit of student services. They talked about the need for us as a community to get better at the way we use data. Also, as a school committee, you guys had asked for us to incorporate data more into the work we've been doing. And I think if anything, we've seen that we are incorporating data more into the work that we're doing, right? And I think it's even evident, as you can see in the slide progression, our last presentation mid-year, you saw all of our principals using data in the conversations, you saw them targeting the way that they're measuring their work. That wasn't happening two, three years ago, right? That to me tells us we're progressing towards that work. That is what we, the work, this meaningful work, that is a progression in the right direction. So framing the shift. And it's not a shift like new shift, but it's a, I want to recalibrate the language we're using. Safe and supportive schools is a language that's used all the time, but I want to make sure when we use it in this space, we're using it in the right direction. One of the things that's important, and I think when, once this PDF is put back online, you guys probably have it, that PDF document should link you to the DESI document. The DESI framework for safe and supportive schools does a really great job incorporating the concepts of equity, mental health, SEL, data, and leadership all into their framework, right? Basically, what it says is that in order for a school district or a school to live out the vision of a safe and supportive school, you have to incorporate all five of these elements into practice, right? In many ways, when I arrived in this district three and a half years ago, Director of SEL and Equity, many people were like, what does that mean? I was really intentional in saying to me what it means is, I need to help our district move towards safe and supportive schools. Now, you never arrived there, right? There's never a rubber stamp that says, you are now safe and supportive, move on like you're, like you're a grade-A stake, right? You've never just arrived there. It's always like an ongoing mission to always strive to be a safe and supportive school, right? But to me, I think as we move forward as a school committee, as a, as a community, this should be the language we use. And as we move together in a, in a culture as a society, as we start to use this language and we think about how do we embed the equity work that the equity audit called us to do, as we think about mental health and SEL, we need to purposely utilize this language of safe and supportive schools, and instead of siloing this language, this language allows us to bring it all together. So as I move forward and I start doing presentations, instead of me doing one presentation, you know, instead of having a, let's say, a separate school committee presentation where today I'm going to report out on the equity work, and then another presentation where I report out on mental health, to me, my presentation should be on safe and supportive schools where I report on all this work happening in an embedded way, using this framework as how this guides our district. So I just wanted to re-center that, so it provides for us a framework of how we speak about this work. So in many ways, you might ask, so how does this look like? Well, it starts by, to be honest, me chicken scratching on a whiteboard. And this is what this looks like. It's, it's in many ways, the people have worked with me, in many ways, it's me whiteboarding, and I'm, those are buckets, and I'm kind of like chicken scratching, and I'm thinking about like all the resources I have, and then you have DESI up top, and I'm taking the Equity Analytics Steering Committee, I'm folding them in into possibly this leadership team, and then I have students at the bottom, and I'm saying, how does Rams Advisory help me with that, right? I'm kind of like envisioning how this work comes together, because this work takes vision. There is no standard protocol that says do A, and then do B, and then do C, because if there was, you just would copy that. There is no standardization for how to do it. The reality is, you have a framework, you have your district reality, and then within that, you bring in amazing people like the team I'm going to talk to you about. You've seen this braided concept, right? So you go from that vision on the board, and then you start to think about, okay, you've heard me talk about PBIS, you've heard me talk about the partnerships with Leslie, you've heard us talk about a data culture, you've heard us talk about professional development. So each one of those are threads that we start to build across our district, right? And then each of those threads, we start to weave together to build a braided rope. And here's the thing about that braided rope. As we start to build a braided rope, the hope is you build that rope across the district that starts to kind of build connections from school to school, and then it becomes really hard to break that braided rope. But if it just stays a thread and you don't braid that together, any one of those threads at any point is bound to break. An administrator leaves. An amazing teacher who was leading that initiative leaves. Funding goes away. That initiative is gone. So part of this MTSS work calls us to braid these initiatives together, to build them together across the schools, to build through lines that then build sustainability, so then it stands the test of budgets, people leaving, long-term sustainability, which in today's age, we must do. So this leads us to this safe and supportive team. So before I describe this, this to me has been the biggest piece that I think is important for you guys to see. This team is made up of 20 members. There's, this team has ESL teachers, direct student, director of student support, math school specialists, elementary teachers, guidance counselors, school adjustment counselors, district curriculum coordinators. We have EDC specialist, May Institute specialist, Hollis Youth and Family outside partners sitting at the table, high school teacher, Montessori teacher, Spanish teacher from across the district. People who wanted to come together and say, I care about this work, I want to join you, but it's voices from across the district providing feedback around this work. And here's what this does. It provides not only a sounding board to me, but it provides sustainability, right? Because if this work is being led by me, at any point, right, I can almost, you lose touch of the work. At Central Office, I'm not on the ground every day with students, seeing what this work feels like, sounds like, tastes like. I need people who are there every day, touching each one of those threads, providing feedback to say, this is how it's working, it's not working, we need to tweak this, we need more resources, et cetera. That's what this board, number one, does. This board also starts to provide feedback around when things are going well, when they're not going well. It also starts to provide feedback around, I can't tell you how many, how many times I'm getting emails for new products, new this, new that, we should try this. This board also starts to provide, say, nah, we don't need new, we need to get good at what we're doing, right? It provides a, like, protection around what we're doing. So this team is a cross-discipline team. It provides ideas and thoughts around professional development into the future. It enhances the team, and I think one of the pieces that's important to acknowledge is every single school, and you heard it probably when they presented, has a similar team. So every school has a similar team, they may call it something different, but is operating in their building, because every single team is operating those similar threads in their building, helping them move the work in their building. But here's the thing, every building is working hard to move it in their building and their building and their building. What we also needed is, how do we make it work across our district, right? We need that braided rope across the district. And think about it, if each one of you, right, knows how to work your system best within your homes, but imagine we're trying to build something across all of our homes. Everyone needs to have the autonomy to figure out, this is going to work in my home, but not your home. But how do we build something across each of our homes? That's the hard part. So as a, as a district, it is my role to help them, help us unite across the district for efficiency, for systemization, for professional development, for funding, for all that work, while giving them autonomy for cultural pieces, for efficiency, to give them what they need at the school level while the system, while systemizing. That's what this team is meant to do. But it also, to be honest, invigorates them, because they feel that efficiency to say, we have ownership at the, like, the local level, while also providing feedback at the higher level around where we go, right? while also providing feedback at the higher level around where we go, right? The other piece I wanted to share is that they, we each, as a team, we crafted our mission. And although I won't read it, for, for those that are, that are home or watching on YouTube, you should be able to see it. And you might be able to see it on your screen. I just wanted to highlight for you while I take a drink of water. The things that are highlighted in color are to be, the things that the people in the room felt that were the strongest messaging in the mission statement. And these are the things that the people in the room felt were the things that resonated with those in the room. So I'll just give you about 30 seconds to just see, these are the things that I think we are most passionate about, that we're working towards. So the other thing that we did is, unlike a strategic plan, we did a logic model. And for those that are unfamiliar with a logic model, so a logic model is basically, we, we kind of put on paper all of our inputs, so all of the things that we're doing. We then, um, we then said, okay, if we do all these things, what are the things we should get out of it? So almost like a computer, like if you feed it all these things, what should we get out? And then we said, if we get these things out, what should our, what should our short-term, what should our short-term outcomes be? What should our midterm outcome, so like six, six months to a year? Year and a half to two years, three years? And as a group, we came up with these. Now, it is going to be overwhelming, so we call this our social-emotional gumbo. And this is what, this is what this looked like. And this was an activity of like Post-its all over the wall, okay? And, but, but for them and for us, it was overwhelming, but it also was enriching. Because we got a chance to see all of the work that we were doing, but also to see, this is where we want to be in three years, right? So I'm not going to have you look at that chart, and we'll look at this chart. So here's what it is in a short, shortened way. The short term, we want to have MTSS structures, which is structures in place that we can measure across all schools and across the district, right? But the midterm, which is in a year and a half to two years, this is where we, we want to start seeing decreases across the board. Right? And, and this is what, i- if you'll notice that pink at the bottom that I want to take a second to highlight. Because when you, when we, when we measure, when we put that logic model out, when you, when you start creating goals that people have, that people get a chance to kind of like envision together, it actually starts creating creativity. Because they got a chance to voice the goals together and create goals. So that last, and I, and I purposely did it in pink. It says improved HPS, adult staff wellness, systems perspective approach. In other words, let's not just do one-and-dones around staff wellness, like, let's all get in a room and let's like do yoga for an hour and now go home now, do you feel better? This meant, let's take a systematic approach to how we create wellness amongst staff, because our data tells us, people are stressed, right? So like, let's take a systematic approach to that. And this is what they said. So, and I'm going to come back to it, but you don't have this slide because I just literally did this today. Because I never stopped working, but I literally got this email yesterday. And I just literally wanted to share with you. I asked for permission from the staff member and I created this slide because I just felt like this spoke so much to what having a goal creates. So I had a teacher send me this yesterday, and it says, just yesterday, I received this email. This teacher was reflecting with a colleague, not as a part of this initiative, just because she cares deeply about our staff and our culture. Her question was simple, hey, Jeriel, why don't we have, why don't we just create a wellness bucket like the buckets we created in our initiative for our educators? In previous districts, I saw teachers leading after-school sessions like yoga, mindfulness, zumba, and it's made a real difference in morale and culture. And, and that, and then I said, and what moved me about this idea is that, is that she wanted to make it one of our buckets. This wasn't prompted, this was her talking with a colleague. Four weeks after we had this meeting, she was still thinking about how she built a better district. Based on a goal that we had created in a meeting, she was still, she was still like churning on how do we build a better district from a goal we had created and from a, an objective that we had made in a meeting together. So then she said, could, is this something that we could add and measure to think about how we improve our wellness across the district? Jeriel, do you think there's something here we could build into our initiative in our leadership meeting? She sent me this yesterday. I said to her, I think this is something we could do, let's meet on Mon, let's meet on Tuesday. I said Monday, and she said, well, that's a day off. I said, okay, let's do Tuesday, right? Because we don't, we don't work on Monday, right? So, um, am I right about, you guys are looking at me, right? We don't, we don't have school on Monday, right? Okay. Okay. I, I saw they didn't look at me, right? Okay.
This Monday?
So, um, yeah. So, um, so I said, so, so in saying that, thank you, Ashley, for leading from within, right? Reminding us that if we focus on the right work, she, like, the work doesn't stop. And I just, I, I just wanted to share that. Because in us literally creating a goal and, and having educators in the room, three, four weeks later, she's having a conversation, it leads to a thought initiative of something that she wants to create in a school. She told me that she had a conversation about this with another administrator just yesterday. She pitched the idea, and I think it's something that we could do, right? This is like, this is the work. And, and think about the buy-in long-term of it. If these ideas come from our educators, they're not coming from, from me, the administrator, it's more likely to have buy-in, more likely to be moved, more likely to be sustainable, right? This is, in, in, in actuality, the long-term sustainability of leadership work, leadership sustainability work of this work coming together. So just wanted to point that out. So how do we move this work? Those were the goals. How are we bucketing it? We bucket, we were now, those, those were the, the outcomes we want to see. We're putting it into three buckets. The three buckets are, mental health tier capacity building, social-emotional support alignment, so how do we align the work? And then data progress monitoring. So those are the three buckets that are happening in the room. I've got my papers out of order. So those are, that's the work happening in that, in that MTS, MTSS aligned work. So now, um, I want to share some of the work happening in the Equity Recommendations. And as I said, as I move forward outside of today, when you see me do presentations, I won't have like a separate document that says, these are the Equity Audit Recommendations. They will be embedded within. But one of the things I wanted to share, because I think that when we talked about and, and shared when I, when we did our presentations, I wanted to make sure that the community understood this. In our mid-year reports and even our strategic plans, one of the recommendations that came from the Equity Steering Committee that we shared in last June was we incorporated all of the recommendations into the strategic plan. So they're actually all are in the strategic plan. But one of the things we did was any of them that found them way, that found themselves in the strategic plan, they're led out with the initials EA, and they're bolded. So you could, you may not be to see in this picture, but right under in this bullet, it does say EA. So anyone, whoever wants to go back to strategic plan or to the, the, like, the word document that Dr. Cusco also puts together, any of them that came from that recommendation from the steering committee, you will see them in EA, right? And that will be the document that anyone can go and see, how are we progressing in that? I just wanted to make sure the community understands that that's a place where we could go see that recommendation. So, but that was a recommendation. Could we make sure that those make them into strategic, into the strategic plan, and they did? Another recommendation was, could we start to move the district in a space where we are using data and that we're building up our data usage and integration? And as I said, that is 100% happening. Not only is it happening in the way we're using it, but we're, we've been building our data literacy and building our professional development amongst all of our administration and using that time this year. And also, I know our curriculum, our curriculum coordinators and our other staff members have also been building up their data literacy as well and using that to drive interventions across the district as well. So that's been happening. We've also been working on our data processes and protocols around how are we going to be using data? It's one thing to just have data tools, it's another thing to think about how do we actually use data? And what are the protocols that we will use when we're actually driving tools for use of that data as well? The other piece that was also really important is that the recommendations around the Equity Audit didn't just sit in the house of the Director of SEL and Equity. So if you go, if you actually go into the strategic plan, there was recommendations that were also for teaching and learning. There was recommendations that were also fell into other, like, other departments also owned recommendations within that work as well. So I just wanted to point that out for the community as well. Another reality of the recommendations is, when I came back this year, the reality of, I tried to reconvene the team, people were stretched really thin this year. It's been really hard to reconvene the team this year. I've tried several times to bring the committee and I had to survey the committee and what the committee told me. One, just because of attendance, but two, they, the capacity was not there this year to be able to meet in person. So what the capacity, what the team was able to tell me was that they'll be able to continue to meet and provide feedback, but they just wouldn't be able to meet in an in-person way. So what I've been able to do, I personally had two things that I've had to move. Move in a sense like two projects that I'm working on myself. And they were updated in the mid-year, in the mid-year goals that we said. And they're slated for updating this March. One is respond, the responding to hate and bias protocol. And what I've been doing is, I've been updating that protocol. I've been having stakeholders giving me feedback on that protocol. And I, the next part is to bring back the steering committee virtually, because they're unable to kind of come in person to give me feedback on that protocol. I'm also working, and I forgot to, there was a picture in there. This year, I actually took on an intern. So this year, I had a student intern. And that intern's helping me also create a Safe and Supportive Student Board that I'm hoping to launch as well to have like a student side to provide me feedback on like Safe and Supportive Schoolwork. But one of the reasons I also want to have a student board is to also provide me feedback on things like a, a protocol. So I'm also looking to have students provide me feedback on like a responding to hate and bias protocol. Because when things like a hate incident occurs, it affects adults and students equally. So I wanted, want to make sure that if we get to a place where we have to respond to hate and bias, that that's been given, I've had feedback from hate from students and adults. The other P, the other protocol that I'm working on is the Equity Decision Making Checklist. Both of those were in the presentation I did last May. That checklist was more about what would we want any review team to, it's almost like a checklist of things we want them to go through before they make recommendations. You know, because they've looked at data, that they've cross-checked this, that they've thought about unintended consequences, that they've thought about, that they've looked at all these perspectives. That checklist is more for adults. So that would be one that I'm most likely going to be bringing to our curriculum leads to make sure that they get a check, they get to look at, and they give me feedback on that. Either one of, both of those protocols, my goal is to bring it to this school committee for this spring for final vetting, and then to have those protocols go and be active for this upcoming school year. Would be the hope of those. And then as we move forward into the future, would be for the equity work to be embedded within my Safe and Supportive MTSS Steering Committee work. And then as I move forward, the equity work is going to be embedded within all my Safe and Supportive School work. And then that's the update. Was to go deeper into kind of both of those spaces and then to kind of frame our work. So as I head forward into the Safe and Supportive School work, so we had that, we would have that framing moving forward. So with that, if there's any questions.
How, how can we, as a school committee, support, better support the work that you're doing? Is there input that you would like for us to see? Because we also impact the system as well, right? So while you talk about how we can build buckets, like, we have a lot of influence on those buckets too. So is there interest in having a school committee involved in those teams or?
Yeah.
You don't have to answer right now, it's more of like a, just a thought.
Yeah, I, I think, so what's challenging is, and I think, I think anytime, and I say this respectfully, anytime school committee, school committee has like authority and it comes with like, not rules, but rigidity. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but like, there's an authority to it. And I think there is this flexi, there is this like authentic flexibility to that MTSS team, because it is their space. That I, that like, I've created that team to be like, this is your space where we bring the mess. Because it has to be a space where they can bring the mess and they can bring the like, I can't stand this about this thing, right? Like they have to be, like, it has to be an authentic space where they could just be fully honest about what's working and what's not. And I would wonder, right? Could they be fully honest about that stuff with, with school committee at the table, right? Because I think that all, even the conversations we've had today, right? About the passionate discussions we've had today, I don't know where the culture is for you guys to be at that table right now. Not to say we can't be, but I think there's, there's, there's work to build.
That sounds fair. And if there are opportunities for your team to showcase some of the work that they're doing, and you feel comfortable inviting us, please do.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Or vice versa, that maybe we need to hear more from you about how the decisions that we make are impacting the work that you're doing.
Yeah.
So we have that feedback.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
In, in terms of with the MTSS, some of the target outcomes, things like-
Do you want me to stop sharing or leave it up?
I'm sorry?
Leave it up.
Yeah, leave it up.
Yeah. Increased family engagement or reducing bias in sports? What are some of the things your team have just talked about in order to get there?
Yeah, so, one of the things that I'm working, for instance, the, the reduced bias in sports. So one of the things we started with, and I'll give Principal List credit on this one, is that his athletic director and Dr. Cusco and Principal List attended some trainings with MIAA around reducing hate in sports. They then had Northeast Institute Against Hate came and did some trainings with their coaches. One of the things I was going to do with our, this leadership team was leverage some mental health, SEL, equity funding to think about how to systematize and train some of our staff so we would have some in-house ability, so we wouldn't have to go long-term and have to go find others to have that capacity. So in other words, we'd want to get to the place where, in the halls and public schools, it's an expectation, where all of our coaches know how to handle when hate occurs on the sports field, right? So we'd want to, but we want to own that ourselves. So in other words, like us, all of us know how to do that training, and we could do that for all of our coaches. Right now, we had to bring in trainers, right? So what we're thinking about is, how do we become trained in any of those concepts so that we can do that into the future, building the long-term sustainability of that? So we kind of have that capacity. So that's what that piece is, is to work with probably Northeastern so that we can kind of build that up, that skill set here. And then long-term, we can kind of build that up within our coaches, within our athletic programs, and have that expectation. It, but I already start, like, it started, but build the long-term of it.
And then the other part, the part about increasing family engagement, what were some of the ideas to?
So some of those ideas, for instance, is, I don't know if you saw that, but there's an upcoming, next Wednesday, a flyer went out to the community about executive skills, executive functioning. So that's one example. That's coming from some of the like SEL mental health funding that I received from DESI around executive skills. So it's around, you know, providing more family engagement opportunities around anxiety, executive skills, mental health things, but being purposeful around all of those, what the data is telling us. But leveraging our team to come up with some of those ideas and suggestions, right? Because I think the other piece too is, I'm one person. So it's also, if I have a team, how can my team help, right? And that actually could also be, when you said, how can we help? That's another piece of how can we help, is like, how can, how can we spread the work of that as well? That's another piece of how can we help is like, how can, how can we spread the work of that as well? Because when we think about mental health, when we think about some of these pieces, these are all of our kids, right? These are all of our families. So how do we kind of expand how we get families in the door, right? When I think about just yesterday, Stephen Hill was here, that was around mental health. That was around, I think, even substance abuse, right? So how do we do more of these things? We got to connect with more families, we got to connect with more students. As of, I think yesterday, when I looked, I don't know if that many will show up, but I think there was like over 100 families signed up for the executive skills workshop. I don't know if that many will come, but that's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
But that might tell us like, there's a lot of interest in that area, right? So things like that.
I have a big picture, big picture question and kind of a little picture question. But so the big picture, I'm wondering if you can help me understand, like, how does this fit into our, the rest of the M T S S? So how do the social, emotional and behavioral tiered supports fit in with the academic supports kind of integrate to support the whole child in Holliston?
Yeah. Yeah, so I, you know, what I would say is, so, I mean, I think, number one, each of our schools have an M T S S model happening that they, you know, fully operate, right? So number one, we're working at the district level to, data was a big missing piece of that. We, as a district, had not built up our, we didn't have data practices built up. So how do you have an M T S S model when you don't have data to leverage in that? Our, each of our schools have for a long time had an M T S S model in full operation. I think one of the pieces that I think has been happening this year, and I know Joni's been working with her curriculum leads, is they've been definitely leveraging her curriculum, and she probably can speak more of that, curriculum coordinators have been pushing in and doing interventions. I don't want to speak for her, since she's nodding her head, maybe she could speak to that. But they've been doing interventions around that M T S S model, around that piece. So I definitely know that that's happening on their side. I know on my side, the S C L mental health side, we've been kind of fully going on the M T S S side like this piece for about two, three years now. Because of, D E S I has been really intentional on their academies that they've been offering. So like through P B I S, A D C, we've been doing the M T S S model for a while. But I know Joni and a lot of her people have been doing that for a while. So she probably can speak more to that, I'd be amiss if I spoke for her, so.
And I think we'll get into that in our update. I don't want to give away all the detail, I'll have specific details and data for you for that.
I was just wondering, it's so linked for kids, so.
Yeah.
And power combining them, yeah, absolutely. So my, my little question kind of goes with this is that when you visit classrooms, what are the changes that you're seeing for the instructional experience for kids? Or if we're not there yet, what are the changes that you're hoping to see?
Yeah. Well, some of the changes I see, well, it's funny because some of the changes I see is sometimes you'll walk in and they're actually doing an S C L lesson. So that's a direct change that wasn't happening always. For instance, what was it, when we did a walkthrough at Miller, I just happened to walk into one where they were doing a ruler lesson. And the teacher was acknowledging that, you know, it was okay to have emotions and was acknowledging her emotions, was modeling for the students her emotions and that, you know. And I think it was a Montessori classroom and they were all kind of like journaling emotions, et cetera. So they were doing like a ruler lesson. But if it was a regular classroom, what I want to see, especially like, for instance, if we're using ruler, is at any time, it can be embedded into anything you do. For example, it could be embedded into a school committee and maybe we can do ruling here someday. So we transitioned from a really charged meeting to meet, right? That transition, we could acknowledge the emotions that needed to be transitioned. We could acknowledge the emotion that was in the room. We could acknowledge the, the, the charged meeting. We can name the emotions that needed to be named. But we probably would have had to do some pre-work so that people understood the language of emotions in the room. There probably would be some education that occurred if this was like a younger classroom. If there's an older classroom and you came up through our system, you probably would have already had the emotional vocabulary, language, et cetera. But that would be built in already to my lesson. If this was a chemistry classroom, this was a super hard lesson that I know all we kids struggle. Maybe I build this into my classroom that I know that when I bring this lesson, kids struggle and I'm ready to have some type of emotional language built in, right? So I say that to say, I want to get to the place, and this is where my M T S S team is, is really helpful, that as we get better at doing this work, we can start to think about where this integrates and how. Or they can say to me, we're not doing this well, what do we need, right? We're about to just, in the next coming weeks, start talking about what P D do we need to do next year. This is where that team helps me come to the table and say, hey, Jerel, this is the kind of P D we need. Because we're doing this well and we're not doing this so well. And this is where like they start to help inform me. That gets to your question around, I see this, and to be honest, like anything, like any boss, you walk into spaces sometimes, like anyone, sometimes you see what they want you to see, right? Sometimes also an empty, like this team will sometimes say, hey, I know you sometimes see, it's not happening all the time, right? So like, I think this team also will help me, give me real honest feedback, to be honest with me and tell me like, it's not always happening all the time, we need to get better at that too. So I'm seeing evidence of it. I see, because also this work isn't always about what you see. It's also about how students experience and how they feel. It's also about the structures we have in place, it's also about routines. Because this is about systems and structures as well.
One of your midterm target outcomes is about increased sense of safety.
Yeah.
Do you get the sense that our students don't feel safe in Holliston Public Schools?
No, I actually would say from the, for instance, for the climate surveys we've had for the past years, I would say a good majority of our students do feel safe. I mean, I don't have the data in front of me, for instance. But what I would say is, in any school district, for instance, there's always some students who don't. And what I would say is that if there's ever students who don't, I'd always want to work to make sure that those kids who don't do, right? For instance, and I'll just give you one data point. For instance, if like, I think it was, let's say 24, and I'll just give you a data point. This has nothing to do with safety. But let's say 20, let's say 20% of our kids feel anxious in our schools, right? Then that means that I want to make sure that I can decrease that 20%. So if I extrapolate that for safety, even if 10% of our kids feel unsafe, then part of my S C L work would be, how do I decrease that? So this work is about decreasing. Our, our climate survey actually does say, a good majority of our kids do feel connected to school. But our data says that as kids get older, they actually feel less connected. Now, that's true about most schools. So younger kids feel connected. As kids get older, they feel disconnected. I also feel that, why does that have to be our truth, right? Like, there's a part of me that feels, we should keep working at that. And why does that have to be the truth of Holliston Public Schools? There's a developmental part that says, kids are also going to be kids. But there's a challenge in that to say, like, we can actually continue to work at that. And why couldn't like, if it's 75%, like, if there's 30% of our kids at the high school who don't feel connected to an adult at Holliston High, could we decrease that to 25? And then next year, could we decrease it to 22? That's the kind, that's what I mean by that. So moving forward, that's a goal for us. It's like every year, how do we have more kids feel connected and less kids feel unsafe? Does that make sense? But I also don't want to litter our data, like a presentation full of data either.
What are some of the measures that you're looking at?
So we would look at climate and culture surveys, we'd look at the Mitchell West Health Survey. We'd look at attendance data. We would look at discipline referrals, although we don't have discipline referrals like to jump out the page per se. We would look at, probably would start there. We also would look at adult, because we, we, when we do climate and culture surveys, we also do like staff surveys. We'd look at that as well. And we've also done family climate surveys and we use those as well. Because those are also like pulses of the district as well. We'd start there.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Shifting to other charge topics, policy.
Okay. So I have, actually, I'm going to pull J C L D medications for tonight. There was a, yeah, anyway, there was a snafu. So the policy was supposed to be, was approved by Dr. Zizwatt, but then there was like a dangling section where we weren't sure we were supposed to keep that section or pull it out. So, and Brenda Barton can't get back to me till tomorrow. So I just figured we'd just pull it for the next meeting. A C A B.
Start with A C A B, Billy.
Yes, of course, I didn't print that one. Can we put it up on the screen, is that possible? My computer's dying. I'll print it up.
You know what, I can put it in front of you too, sorry. So which one?
I'll try.
A C A B, sexual harassment.
So it's actually just kind of a carbon copy of our Title IX policy. So I'm not going to read through the whole policy because it's, it's a, it is an established policy. It's not a new policy, but it is mimicking exactly what Title IX is now. And all it does, the only thing that's different from it is it says, it names the director of, doesn't give her actual name, but it says the director of the Student Services. There's no actual difference from our Title IX. So if you've all looked at it already, then we could just approve that change. Because it's literally a wholesale, like, we had to just cut and paste what was in there into our own policy.
Can I remove the question down by policy?
Yeah, the question mark, it says, it is, that is relevant. I did say that it is.
Okay.
Just cut that out.
I don't have, oh yeah, I do, okay. I'll pull it.
I can also just tell Lisa to take care of that.
Okay.
Which I did, but she wasn't on. Why am I not signing in? My computer won't sign in.
It's okay, you said.
Okay. So does anybody have any questions about this policy? It had to be updated by law, so there's no editorializing within the policy. It's strictly just following what the law is. And then we just added, that's director of Student Services.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to A C A B. So move. Uh, that requires a roll call vote, Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
He turned the volume.
Oh, we put the volume off.
Now he's turning the volume.
Dan?
Which one's coming next?
Don't.
Uh, B G. I can, I actually have that one printed, so you don't have to. I just had, I had printed them all.
Sarah?
I must have dropped one.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes.
Okay, thanks. The next is policy B G, School Committee Policy Development. So this one, the reason why we're updating this policy is because to, we were trying to reflect the work from the town side that they did on envisioning future Holliston and wanting to talk about how our policies need to reflect our, our mission, our values, et cetera. So we just wanted to make sure that as we develop policies for our community, we make sure that they reflect the values and missions and mission and strategic plan of our H P S community. So I added in the green, and I'll just read it out loud, just the green section. Okay, well, it's for me, it's green, maybe it's pink for you. So in the second paragraph, I, we added, "The policy development process will reflect the mission, values and strategic plan of the H P S community. H P S committed to providing a safe and supportive environment where every student can thrive academically, socially and emotionally." So is there any?
And just to be clear, we're not, this is not tying us to the town, it's just simply?
Nope, it's just reflecting what, you know, what we believe our current practice and continuing practice should be. It's basically codifying what we're already doing.
Sure. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I'm just asking to look at the wording of the first sentence, which is, "Policy development is the primary responsibilities." I think you should say, "One of the primary responsibilities."
Yes, it should, maybe something got cut off. I'll make sure that Lisa makes that change.
Uh, Hillary just did.
Oh, okay, thanks.
It's one of the primary legal or something, I don't know.
No, I think just.
That, we didn't change anything else, so that has just got cut off somehow.
All right, so.
How about changing the policy review date to today, 2019? I'll just change that.
Yeah, I just put amended.
Okay.
I usually don't do that until after we do it.
Yeah.
After her.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the amendments to policy B G, School Committee Policy Development. So move.
Okay.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you. And then policy E E A on transportation of students. I know that we had pretty recently, yeah, we did, in December, updated this policy. However, because then we voted to put both, both Miller and Placentino together, we had to change the language because we had started saying like K 1 and 2 as a grouping and then, you know, 3, 4, 5 as a grouping. So we need to just edit, you know, and change that, revise that language so that it was reflecting that change that we made. So if you can see the highlighted portion in the bullet points, mention a designated walk zone in the second bullet point. And there's an added third bullet point that says, "Grades K through 6 who live outside of the designated walk zone and 2 miles or less from their school will be subject to a transportation fee." That's following state law, but the designated walk zone is something that we've created. Or I should say, the district has created, the administration has created with Dr. Jordan and Kim Sexton, along with Holmes, and decided on a, an area that will be designated. It's called the designated walking zone, obviously. And that will live at, you know, central office so that people can see where they are. And that, there's like an actual map that shows where that designated walk zone is. And so those people that are in that designated walk zone will not be eligible for transportation. But anybody that's outside of that would be.
To put online?
Are we publishing it?
Yes, we're publishing it, yes.
Just a quick, so why are we going K through 6 rather than K through 5? Just thinking of the schools, right? Like the 6th grade is in the middle.
Yeah, because K through 6 is where we're legally required to provide transportation.
No, no, I mean, but for like, as far as the designated walk zone. Oh, that's for the transportation fee, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, it's for the fee.
Um, aren't those, there's the exception of those living in the designated.
The designated walk zones are by school.
They're by schools.
There's one that's high school.
Yeah, there's a high school specific one that's 9 through 12. And then there's, or I should say, technically it says it's 7 through 12, but, but yes.
Okay, so all, all children in each school will be treated?
They have a designated zone, yeah, there's a zone A and zone B essentially.
As long as it's not weird, like the 6th grade, Adams kids are different than the 7th and 8th. So that's fine.
And then there's, uh, grades 7 through 12 are entitled to transportation services with the exception of those living in the designated walk zone according to the H P S transportation maps available on the district website to the school as determined by the superintendent and/or, should say, their designee. Sorry, I'm going to make that change. "Grades 7 through 12 who live outside of the designated walk zone will be subject to a transportation fee." And that is the only change that we made from December.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to policy E E A, Transportation Student. Okay, that requires a roll call, Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
And then lastly, we do have the policy about the operation of town, tower lighting for committee and field, policy K F C A. And I know that we had a neighbor that came to speak about his concerns about the policy. It wasn't so much about actually the lights itself, but about being respectful of noise, et cetera. And we do clearly state within the policy that we need to, we have requirements by the town bylaws in terms of sound, of noise. And that, when we talked in policy subcommittee with the athletic director, Matt Baker, and Mr. List, we talked a lot about making sure that our students understand that when we have the lights going, that we have to be respectful of our neighbors. But I think one of the issues of why they brought this forward is because now in Tri-Valley, a lot of this, the, the schools are ending later in the day, or they're starting early, starting later, and so they're ending later. So it's just making it necessary for us to be able to use the lights more. So it's just making it necessary for us to be able to use the lights more than we had in the past. And that's gonna continue. So having us say that we're only gonna have 20 events, and it was, 20 events was meaning actual, um, games. It wasn't including practices, so that was the idea about events. But we felt that that was not really practical at all to have a number, but that we need to be mindful that we only use it as we absolutely need to. And that we, that is reflected in the policy. And what I would say is that I think that for any of the neighbors, like Mr. Yari or others, if they have concerns about, um, how the policy is being implemented, that they need to talk with Mr. List and our administration about what things we can do in terms of, um, making sure that we are being respectful of our neighbors at all, as much as we can be. I mean, um, but they do live near a school, so we can't change our location, so.
And schools tend to do things that schools do.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and we, and we're, we have, are gonna have games, and we're gonna have practices, but we're not, I don't think that it's used, being used excessively.
Right.
Or unnecessarily. Now, if they have issues around noise, and we can't control people who are driving down the road and beeping their horns just because they feel like it. But we do actually put in our policy that they're not allowed to use air horns, and any of those kinds of things are already existing in the policy. So, um, I just, I just wanna, I'm just gonna read this section of it just cause I wanna reiterate to, to folks that, um, it's already in the policy. "But except during urgent or unforeseen circumstances, tower lights shall not be illuminated beyond 9:30 PM on weeknights and 10:00 PM on weekends. Um, and however, in all instances, they should be turned off at the earliest time practicable, no later than 1 half hour after the contest ends." So I just, uh, I feel like we're trying to be really reasonable, and we also make sure that we're only allowing the lights to be on for Holliston Public Schools teams. We have been approached in the past by a number of outside organizations that want to be able to use our fields, and we have said no, because we're trying to be, you know, mindful of our, our neighbors, so.
It may actually, we're looking into that, but, but I think, the one thing is, if, can we find a way to communicate this to our neighbors? I know we've done it, I don't know if there's a way that we could set up either an email box that people could, could send concerns if they have them, I just, you know, it's, it's, I don't want them to have the feeling that they have to call the police because, you know, the lights are on.
So I, I have heard concerns from neighbors that compressed air horns and other electrical devices have been used, uh, under Section 6. Uh, it says that actions will be taken as deemed appropriate by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee. Have there been any actions that have been taken to prevent that or to remedy that?
I would say that they would need to be reported. And I've not gotten anything reported. And so if they are reported to David, uh, Mr. List, or reported to myself, then that's something we can address. But, um, I think if, if you've heard from, from neighbors, or if you've heard from people and they have some explicit examples, um, they can forward that on to either myself or Mr. List, you know, to address that.
All right, thank you.
But they have made sure to say, you know, like we talked about, um, Matt Baker had said that, you know, kids used to be able to put, like, they put the music on, and they say, you know, we're gonna have to face that a different way, or we're gonna have to turn it off at a certain time. So they're, he's, they are being mindful of it, but I think that we're reminding them that we need to be mindful of it is important too, so.
Do you think it's worth though, a letter to, to the neighbors, just sort of giving some information of what to do if, or we, what we, what, you know, suggestions to, I mean, again, it seems?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that if there is, if they have concerns, they can, they can contact.
Right, so what I'm saying is, telling them that that's how they can?
Yeah.
Do that so they don't call the police.
Well, they, I mean.
I mean, they can always call the police, and you can't, you're not taking.
They're right, I can't.
You're not taking that away, but if they feel like they have an alternative way of, of reporting it, maybe they don't.
I don't know that they do have another way of reporting it. Other than to Mr. List, you mean in real time?
Well, if someone blows an air horn, they're never gonna, you know, they're not gonna, in real time, you know, by the time the police get there, the person will have, more than likely gone anyway, so.
It's hard to fix it through policy, right?
It, it's not something we can, yeah, I can't, there's no way that, it's an enforcement issue.
I'm not talking about.
We already have to have a police detail there when we expect, um, you know, like, when we have big football games, and we're required to have, you know, police presence anyway. And that's part of the policy already. But, I don't know, I mean, I've lived in Holliston for 15 years, I have roosters in my backyard. So I have blackout shades, and I have white noise machines, because otherwise.
No, no, I'm not even suggesting, I'm not suggesting any sort of enforcement, I'm just suggesting that if we communicate how they can sort of report something, so at least that they feel like if something's going on, they have a mechanism for.
Sure, I mean.
Yeah, sometimes it's, sometimes it's not, sometimes there's youth, youth events, sometimes there's. Right, it's not just a school.
No, no, I, I'm just, but just if people feel. Fine, no.
I, I actually thought that he was still gonna be here for this, so I, you know, but that's, that's okay.
I wasn't planning on giving you your cell phone, like, you know.
No.
You know, you can set, "Report incidents at Holliston," like, you know, you can set up an inbox that.
Or text David List.
Or we can just put, we can just put, "Text David List."
Well, I just, I also just wanna remind folks that, like, one of the reasons why we got, like, that whole backstop and everything was because there was, like, what balls going into other neighbors as well. I mean, we needed the new backstop, but, but it does protect some of that as well, right? I mean, it's, there's, there's things that we've done, you know, pretty systematically to make sure that we're being good neighbors.
Communicating with our neighbors, a mechanism for them to communicate with us.
Okay, so what do you want me, as a, I don't know.
I'm not asking you to, no, no, I'm not asking you to, no, no. Sorry, Cynthia, I, I, I didn't mean for this to you, I mean, that was more for, uh, for the administration to think about something about.
Sure, well, then they can think about, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think if it was, if it's a high school event, they should reach out probably to Mr. Baker, right? Or Mr. List. I think the hard ones are gonna be, if it wasn't our event, we'd have to let the rec department know, cause then they would.
Right. But they're not allowed to have lights, but that's, that's what I'm saying, though, it's about noise, and that's not what's covered really. I mean, it is covered in this policy, but it's not part of the policy, it's about lighting.
Take it for what it's worth, my suggestion would be to go and run in a butter's list at the, at the assessor's office, get a list of our, our neighbors, and just send them a, a letter about what our policy is linked to our policy.
Here's our policy.
And here's a way to, to report an issue or contact someone, and, and it does not need to be anyone's personal email address or cell phone, it can be something you set up, but just, that would, that's my suggestion, but take it for what it's worth.
Would you like Mr. Jordan, Dr. Jordan, to write it as a facilities and operations person, is that what you're?
That, that's, that's your, uh, that's your call. I'm just being there.
That would be great. Dr. Jordan.
Or David.
Or David.
EJ, you know.
I mean, he is in charge of facilities after all, I'm just saying, and operations. Dr. J.
Okay, so, um.
So can I, can we approve this, please? Thanks.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna get there.
Okay, I'm just.
My, my computer's having.
Trying to move quickly here.
Okay.
It's already after 9:00.
Well, what, what policy is?
K F C.
K F C A, so I'll entertain a, does it have any other more? Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the amendment to K F C A, Operation of Tower Lighting Committee and Field. So.
Second.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
No, it's fine, I'm a, a yes as well.
And like I said, JLC CD will add to next week's meeting or whatever.
I think it, uh, now move on to Central Office, uh, admin update, I apologize, I'll be right back.
Yeah, I just have two quick updates, I think, too. One is, uh, well, I was principal for the day last week at Placentino, and then yesterday, was it just yesterday, at Miller. And I did have a great day, and I did speak to the teacher that Jariel was mentioning. I will say, we did have, actually ran a yoga program for staff last year. We were hoping to get more people coming to it, it was a very small group. I'm very open to trying again, um, I guess, you know, if we, we have to try to find people to do it, and then hopefully we can get people to sign up, because we had a signup procedure. We've talked about trying to do Zoom and mindfulness again, but I'm always open to trying to get anything to try to engage staff after school, so that's something we certainly can work on further. And I just, I just wanna clear up one thing. We keep hearing a lot about that we're de-leveling at the middle school, and yes, um, I did give you, um, just sort of the timeline of the discussion that's happened the last couple of years around that. There was a recommendation made based on equity audit and mass study group to de-level, but then after that, we determined we were not going to de-level. So there are still 2 levels in 8th grade, that's the way it's been for at least the last 5-plus years. Um, it, the only difference is, I just wanna reiterate, because people seem to think we're, we're taking more levels away. We haven't added any levels, we're taking the higher level, grade 8 math, and making it Algebra 1 based on the school committee input and vote last May. But we are not de-leveling. We have not proposed de-leveling any further than just that one recommendation that was not moved forward. So hopefully we can get that, put that to rest and continue to have, I know that that's something we'll be talking about later tonight as well.
Susan, can I just piggyback on that just for a second, though? Um, cause I've gotten a lot of feedback from folks asking about, you know, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna de-level, we're not gonna have math levels anymore, we're not gonna differentiate instruction? And I just wanna reiterate, what is our goal? Like, if our goal is for all of our students to be able to have a pathway to get to calculus, maybe, is that the goal? And I'm just gonna say that from my personal experience, I have 3 kids that have gone through the district, they've all had very different experiences, um, and very different, you know, aptitudes to math. And all of them have been able to have that pathway to get to calculus if they wanted to. So whether they were taking, so I have a sophomore that's been taking with the equivalent of 2 full years to get through Algebra 1 and Geometry, but he could take honors Algebra 2, and then also pre, uh, pre-algebra, I'm sorry, pre-calculus, and then get to calculus senior year, if he wanted to. He doesn't want to, but if he wanted to, he could do it. And I have one that's taking calculus right now, and he did, he did get it honors class in, in 8th grade. So I'm just saying, like, just because it's a different pathway, doesn't mean you can't get there. So 3 different kids, 3 different experiences, all had a pathway to calculus, so I just don't want people to think that they're gonna be blocked off. The whole point is to open up more opportunity, not to close off opportunity. Sorry.
And I think we get to it later when we get to John Doe too.
We do, yeah.
We do. I'll lose statement.
All right. So I, let me move on to Joni?
Yes.
Joni's gonna give a quick PD update from, um, yes, March 14th.
So on March 14th, we had a very full day, I'm gonna very quickly go through what was offered. So for everyone in all schools, we had a landmark training that Jess BD was able to arrange, and then breakout sessions afterwards. It was a follow-up session from our January PD that they had with them. And Lamarck worked with them really on how to incorporate language-based support for reading into all contents. And afterwards, they had a building-based breakout session. If you go to the next slide. Placentino and Miller also had eye-ready training, to continue that training, really looking at, now they've had the second benchmark, so really analyzing how they look at the first and the second, and compare it, and then figure out what the next steps are to support all the students based on their growth and placement. If you can move on. Placentino and Miller also had some other sessions, integrated, um, preschool, obviously at Placentino, had training in the process for writing IEPs, called the Bloom Method. Pre-K worked on Hegarty data, um, that's Arphoemic Awareness Resource, and they had continuum training. Unified Arts Programs, uh, K through 6, excuse me, K through 5, looked at preparing training for special educators and PIRAs, and then also curriculum mapping and OT and speech, worked on coursework. Next, at Rams, we had math differentiation, um, for their math lessons. OT, SLPs, and Special Ed worked on the new IEP and next generation of special education testing. Unified Arts, um, worked on preparing training for special educators and PIRAs. A lot of special educators and PIRAs really don't understand what Unified Arts does, so they were doing some training, developing training for them. They also worked on curriculum mapping and assessments. Our ELA teachers, social studies, science, L and Computer, looked at revisiting and applying tech updates. Next. Rams and High School, this is really exciting, the social studies and some of the Rams ELA teachers were able to have facing history in ourselves come and present. That was funded by the Dusty Genocide Grant, so they really appreciated it, um, it went very well. The High School also had brought in from Framingham State University a writing workshop, and that was very well received, and they're interested in continuing working with Framingham State. Holliston High School also, the Unified Arts worked on common assessments and curriculum mapping. The science, technology, math, and business teachers worked on curriculum mapping, and special education worked on transitioning services to a new schedule. Continuum had their own PD that Jess puts together. They worked on curriculum mapping, adverse childhood experiences training, podcasts and reflection work, student criteria, and transition process. And they really are, um, in the feedback, they are loving that they are having this time together. The district nurses had CPR recertification training, emergency response, preparedness, medication admin plan they worked on, and cybersecurity training, because they missed the other training, so they were able to receive it. SSP providers, which is really, to remind you all, those are school counselors, school adjustment counselors, board-certified behavior analysts, school psychologists. They worked on executive functioning skills to promote school success. So I just wanted to thank all the variety of people that put this together, it's a huge uplift. And we had a lot of great feedback, we met with PD Council last night. So we will take that all into going into tomorrow. We have, uh, a bunch of us working on PD plans for next year, really looking at what the needs are and starting up planning. Also, switching gears, you asked, um, me to talk to the teachers, high school teachers, about Delta Math. So Dan, myself, Tina Cordis, and Leah Barton were, um, were able to work, uh, excuse me, to meet with Bob Tivden once, and then the high school teachers once. And they did a wonderful job of explaining to us what the differences are right now. Until we can find out from iXL and other platforms that we use, if they can do the same thing, we will continue using Delta Math for next year. Yeah, you're welcome. So we were able to talk to them. Another exciting thing, just yesterday, our, we had visitors from Denver, Colorado to observe our French immersion program. So our French immersion program, um, success is known far and wide, and they literally are coming from across the country. I was able to spend a good amount of time with them yesterday. Executive Director, a principal, and a math teacher came. They have a, um, existing K through 8, um, Chinese immersion program, a Spanish immersion program, and they're starting up a French immersion program. So just coming observing, serve classes, ask teachers questions, ask administrators questions. So it's really nice to share knowledge, and we got ideas from them too. So it's a really nice exchange. So kudos to all the French immersion teachers, and Ida Papas for arranging that. I'm sorry? Oh, there is a group that's across the country. I mean, there are, you know, like, SEAL by Literacy groups, there's French immersion groups, there's, you know, like educator very specific groups, and they kinda talk online a lot, but, um, this is, uh, I wanna guess maybe the 4th or 5th time since I've been here that different groups have come to observe. So they're doing a very nice job.
It's cool if there's more interest in that, glad to hear it.
Before I hand off to you, can I just, I did forget to ask you, I know you had asked, um, Principal Manning to put together just some of the work the teachers have done regarding math, and I know you're gonna have the math Subcommittee up, do you want me to share what she shared with me at that time? Or I can share it with you electronically?
I'm gonna just turn you into electronic.
Okay, I'll send you what you, I'll send.
But you did Karen putting it together. It wasn't 9/17.
Well, that's why I thought I'd at least get it to you, since she took the time.
No, no, that's, no, I appreciate that.
This weekend is the Holliston High School Athletic Hall of Fame Ceremony. So the, uh, congratulations to the 2025 inductees. So the 2006 golf team, Coach Paul Rolls, Coach Ed Montanudo, Joe Fish from 1956, Michael Kulcasi from 1984, Allison Martin, 1995, Stacy Auer, 1996, Kim Thalman, 1998, Dave Dubin, 2012, and Kylie Renzen, 2015.
Wow, congratulations to all. Okay, good, thank you. We don't have any personnel-ish matters today, so we'll go right to the reports of our Subcommittees. Communications? Sarah? Communication update?
Sorry, I got that.
You're right.
You know, I don't have an update for you.
Okay. Uh, policy? Pause it.
I just did the Hollis.
Okay.
So I don't have another date yet.
Good.
Meeting in April.
Budget?
And budget met again today at 5:30 and voted and we'll do our presentation shortly.
Super Edo?
Nothing more. We have another meeting, I think, next.
The next week?
Next week.
All right, let's get to the good stuff. School calendar for 2025, 2026?
Are you going to solve this today?
We are. Sarah did a great job putting together two draft schedules and I know that because she has some things she wants to share. Do you want me to pass this around?
I just, I printed out what the, would be with the half days on there.
Sarah, we don't leave until we solve this.
Is this a challenge?
Speak for yourself.
It is, it's a challenge. I don't know.
It is.
It's a puzzle.
It's a puzzle and I don't, I mean, I, I know there are things I don't know about how the half days work.
Yeah, so I want.
I just was hoping we could try and get some in to try and, almost all of the districts around us have a January 2nd off and finish by the 18th.
So I can tell you.
Move start on the 17th or even the 16th.
Yeah, so I mean, there's two things that we have on our plates. We have a, a number of days for students and a number of days contractual for staff as well. So our calendar for staff is 185 days. Students must attend a minimum of 180 days. So when you look at the opening day plus four full PD days, plus the 180 days for students, that's where it's 185 and that works out really nicely. Now, I did talk to the principals if we stay, which we still are recommending for full day PDs and I'll explain more why it makes sense. I mean, it definitely makes sense as far as efficiency for PD. We've been able to do much more meaningful PD. If Mr. Renee were here, he would tell you, the only reason we're able to get the work done around SEL is because with those full days getting, we have all these small groups in four different buildings with currently three different schedules, which will go down closer to two, make it a little easier, but you're still not going to get the whole district together when you have half days. It just doesn't work at all. Same thing with power professionals, just planned most of the power professional PD. And again, with those different schedules, getting them all together, it limits our opportunities. So this year we're in much more effective PD by going back to the full days. Now, apparently a number of years ago, there was some request to try some combination of full and half. So when they did that, you still need to meet the contractual 185 days. So there was an agreement, and this came from Mr. Boudin, I may have it somewhere as a side agreement, I'm not sure. But when the PD Council agreed longer for us to then, if you're going to do a combination, went to three full days and then four half days. But then when you went to four half days, you're actually cutting into more, less time on learning for students and less instructional days. And you still have the 185 day contract for teachers. That's when the district went to 181 days for students to make up for the lost time on learning and to meet the contractual 185. So anything less than what I proposed, whether it's a half day or a full day, we're still at the same end date regardless. However, I did talk to the principals on Tuesday in my meeting with them. And because with the snow days, we had one snow day this year, one snow day last year. It's not ideal, but to have the January 2nd off, I think that we still think that it's better to go with January, I'm sorry, June 22nd as the final day, which would be a half day, knowing that it's pretty likely that we'll have one snow day and it'd be the 23rd would be the half day. Again, there's no ideal here and it really gets back to the number of holidays we've added, but to meet all of those criteria, there's no other way to get that to happen.
So Sarah put together an interesting calendar where she split one PD day into two and then put one PD day on Eid. And so gets us the second off and ending on the 17th. I mean, could we make, I mean, could we make the 17th a full day for students? And then could we make the 18th the last day for, for teachers?
So then we'd have to make it a PD day for teachers.
No, I mean, just you could have the, you have the PD day.
I don't know if I have the, so you do three full day PDs and four, four half days?
Can we do that? Yeah, that's been the model because the students have 181 days in that model.
I would suggest, I would suggest three full days and two half days. I don't know why you.
That's a reduction in the, in the PD time. Right now, we have 24 hours of PD and in the past model, we had about 27. And the teachers have, the PD council.
The half day ends with 10:07.
It's, yes.
Six, it's a six.
A half day and a half day is?
It's not really a half day.
Okay, so a half plus a half does not equal all?
So it's, I think it's a little over 12 hours. It's almost split into eight hours. Plus six times three is 18. It was about, when we had the four half days and the three, it's about 26 hours for teachers, 12 hours for power in either model. And it's also on the four full days, it's 24 hours. So we really, we can't cut into the, they don't want to lose PD time. The PD Council, that's part of the agreement we have with them as well. So I did look at both of the other examples. I mean, you can, I know there was one suggestion that you, I did suggest that last year that you could, we, we had a full PD day in March and we could move it to Eid. I will say though, I don't know how that would be received now, given that it was just added, so I think that could be problematic.
What if we did, I mean, what if we did one PD day on Eid and one PD day on Rosh Hashanah?
I think that's, you're stepping on the third rail of what we're doing.
Yeah, but I'm stepping on my own third rail.
But January 2nd is a good day. We know because it's one day. Why wouldn't we consider putting a PD on that day?
Which one?
January 2nd.
Sure, because they're not going to come.
But if we have school.
If we're having the school.
Well, I think that's why I suggested.
We're having the school, we're going to have the same.
I think we're all in agreement that January 2nd is not a good day to have school or PD.
I'm aligned with that. It's just like, we're going to have school, then rather.
June 22nd would have to be.
And I, please, 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 I am requesting for the Unified Arts people advocating for them that we would not mess with that November date. That's the voting date, just because that's when we can get together with surrounding districts and provide specialized PD for our teachers.
There's no voting going on this year and no.
No, no, but it's still, yeah, everybody still does that on the.
That's a day that a lot of districts still hold.
Right, right. Even if it's not a non-presidential election.
Wow, there's any.
Share resources elsewhere.
The timing of it. So Frank brought up the idea of doing PD on Friday, January 2nd. Do we want to talk about that? How, how do people feel about that?
Because right now we're skipping, we don't move the date.
June 23rd, we're, we're having school on January 2nd. I agree with Cynthia. Sorry, what was, what did Cynthia say? I want to hear. She thinks it's a bad idea.
Bad idea.
What about, okay, December 24th is a half day.
But the concern is that it's a bad idea because people won't come. Is there a certain percentage of students that if they don't come, it doesn't count as an instructional day, correct? Do we, are we at risk for that on January 2nd?
Yes, there is.
Under state law, you have to have a certain percentage.
Percentage here, so they will be.
And if that happens on January 2nd, we add a day? What do we do?
Pretty much. We'd be back to, I don't know what happens in that situation. I've never been in it.
Okay.
PD on Memorial Day?
Yes, Dan, that, January 2nd, no, but.
So that, that's why, actually Mr. List was there and there was a consensus from the principals that when we have lemons, we're trying to make lemonade and probably the best lemonade would be to still have January 2nd off and hold school on Jan, or June 22nd was the consensus.
Yeah.
No one's coming on January 2nd.
They're not.
So.
No one's coming on June 22nd?
Does a half day count as a day? They're not coming this year on June, whatever it is, 21st.
Okay, what if we did a half day on December 24th?
Unfortunately, I think people might have already planned trips for that day.
Well, they might have already planned potentially January 2nd, I guess, so. I mean, I, I don't know, like, which one's a sour, more sour lemon?
Well, the only other thing was to suggest going back into August.
Sorry, I picked that up.
Whoa, 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 I said that and.
No, for teachers.
For teachers, not for students.
What about Dan's suggestion of having two PD days on two holidays, but I don't think we should just select, you know, two of the religious holidays? We should be able to rotate each year.
Well, we can rotate each year. I, I chose Rosh Hashanah this year because Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur both fall on, on school days this, this year, so they're both off. So, and since I'm Jewish, I also feel like, you know.
Third rail that one right now. I think it's a bad idea. I think if you put out something to say, this is what we're thinking about doing for another year, that that makes more sense.
I mean, we're also talking about two school day, like, I get the energy.
Well, what I will tell you is that the teachers fairly overwhelmingly, from the data I've seen, are, are in favor of having school on the religious holidays. So, I mean, so that, that's also sort of in the, in the back of my mind.
Much larger conversation though, Dan.
No, no, I'm not suggesting we have school on the religious holidays. I, I was, I'm not going there right now. I'm just, I'm suggesting that for PD there.
There is a neighboring district that does observe religious holidays, but did choose to have school on the Good Friday. I mean, not school, PD, they're doing PD on, on Good Friday. That's true.
And so that's something. And I did mention that last year when you were adding the holiday, that the teachers can take off. You know, there is contractual language on that, but then it would decimate the PD if a lot of people took it off. Good Friday, and having, growing up Catholic myself, it's a, it doesn't start till after noon or whatever, but, but either way.
Well, I would say that I'd prefer to decimate PD than, than decimate the, you know, the classroom.
Not if we're paying money though, that's where, that's what I'm following right now. We don't know the days and we're trying to.
No, still, still if we're paying money, I'd rather it impact PD than impact the, you know, the student learning.
Just don't serve meat that day.
But if teachers don't receive the PD, that's directed, directly negatively impacting student learning.
I mean, that's the whole purpose.
Right, that's the purpose of PD.
This is a no-win situation to me.
It's your sub or is that a company?
The least impactful and that.
Okay, I'll, I'm going to get backlash for this, like most things I suggest, with no easy options.
This is your time to not say that.
With no easy options, because we could argue January 2nd, X, Y and Z, how awful would ending June 23rd be?
It would be June 22nd. I think June 20th, yeah, we're just planning for like that. June 22nd.
Well, with the snow day, it'll be 23rd.
Hey, let's hope we don't have a snow day, right? Then it's a half day.
So you're saying, don't hold school on, on January 2nd and kick school all the way?
Well, I mean, we need to have a constructive debate. We're saying, no one's coming on the 2nd. What's the likelihood people are going to come on the 22nd?
Just as likely as, yeah.
If you hold, if your last.
Could we go back and talk about the 24th, having half day on the 24th?
Yeah, that's where I'm at, Sarah.
And the reason, no, the, the vacation is going to be so long.
Exactly.
It is.
The problem is though, Sarah, is that if people are traveling, they've already booked that, they're planning it, it is Christmas Eve.
Yeah, exactly.
Like I get, like we should have, if we did this six months ago, probably.
Okay, sorry, I get it. I'm sorry, I, I don't have amazing sound here, so I, yeah.
No worries, Sarah. I'm, I'm creative too.
I, I guess Frank, I'm thinking if you ended school on the 23rd, the impact is you're either having your, you'd have a final on the 22nd, you'd have kids in taking finals.
Well, that's only in the case that there is a snow day, which is some of.
Yeah, no, it would, the last day would be the 22nd right now, just saying if they were a final day.
No, 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 I was saying, sorry, I was saying what Susan was saying. 22nd you end and just betting we'll have a snow day.
We should put the final on the 18th, correct? Yeah, 17th, 18th, like the latest. So that's probably the safest situation right now. And then you do want to think about, like, if you're going to make a big change, it would be the following year, considering all holidays and that.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I don't know in that state yet, I can't imagine people, there's probably more travel booked for January 2nd than June 22nd. No?
Well, it's not just even the travel, it's just people start camp.
Yeah.
Camps will start then, that's.
What are the end dates for the other districts? Sarah, do you have that? I know we were sent.
They all just have different PDs.
Well, some don't start till after Labor Day, so you'd, no matter, you're going to find districts that probably would end them too.
I think it has collective.
Yeah, I think Dr. Jordan sent it to us.
And on the 16th. But the districts that celebrate Tavoli and Eid are, end on the 18th.
Did you have any that started after Labor Day that would go later too? I think there's people, there's districts that still start after Labor Day, so then they definitely.
Not around.
Yeah, just Franklin and Medway start after Labor Day. Everyone else starts on the 27th. That was, the other, a lot of them have full day PDs on the 25th and 26th.
Yep.
So there's that.
Yeah, it just doesn't change the end date to do that.
Right.
Okay. Again, I'm going to put probably unpopular, opening day for staff, could that be a PD day?
No. This criteria that we have to meet, they, they get time in the classrooms.
Yeah, time in the classrooms, reviewing over IEPs.
Believe it or not, I've dealt with this a long time. I really have thought through, we've thought through.
It's just, it's, this is just like one of these odd years, Frank, that it's a little bit.
So if we're dealing with an odd year and we can't wait.
This is an odd year. This is definitely an odd year.
We're going to be picking this up at the beginning of next school.
I don't remember the last time we voted on a calendar, the end.
Do we say June 22nd? I mean, I, we could sit here arguing, and we will, for as long, January 2nd, half day, Christmas Eve, none of those are optional or optimal. June 22nd, not great, but.
It isn't.
I'll be honest too, if, if we have three snow days next year, we're going to meet June, so.
Yeah, we're not going to though.
I mean.
My preference, I would rather have us in on the January 2nd than have, bringing kids in on June 22nd. And if we end up with several snow days, we lose kids who are already gone for camp or already left for vacation.
Yeah, I just, we're not going to have people, nobody's going to show up on the 2nd.
The problem is if we, if we have the 2nd and we don't get, what, what is the numbers we have to have to count it as a day?
I don't know, we were just thinking about that because there is a number, I know, like if you have the flu and you only have a certain percentage, it doesn't count. But I can't remember what that is.
But then we're going to June 22nd anyway, so.
Exactly.
I'd rather just plan.
This issue came up. It was getting.
Well, I know.
I, I think a half day on the June 22nd is probably the least impactful at this point because we kind of.
That's what I'm thinking as well and just.
What, would it, are you, 22nd?
The 22nd be the last day?
Okay.
With January 2nd off.
January 2nd off.
Yep.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying, Dawn.
I'm a no on that, but that's.
I'm more uneasy about this than.
Well, I'm a no. If, if we didn't live in New England and we often have one or more snow days, I think it's.
But that will push it anyway though.
Yeah.
Right, like where we're at right now, if we have a snow day, we're going.
If we end on the 18th and the last half day is Monday, June 22nd, then you're still making your finals. If you bump it into that next week, some of these kids have left for camp and I, and they might not be able to make up their final for months after that.
The concern being though, if we don't have enough kids come in on January 2nd.
Absolutely, then you might have to revisit what you're going to do for the remaining calendar, right?
And I just, I don't know how that works because I'm penalizing all the people that showed up on January 2nd.
That's why I'd rather, obviously, I know we're late, but I'd rather tell people when the last day is versus take a risk with January 2nd and have to push it anyway. Right, like that. I mean, to be fair to anyone booking a trip right now, booking the week right after school, snow days could impact that. They all, everyone knows that. So I, again, I bite my tongue with this because it's, there's no, there's not many options actually.
I like Sarah's draft too, but that's just, I mean, I know it didn't quite get the full PD, but we are in odd years and maybe we just have to.
We just have to deal with the odd year, like this is the best.
Well, this year's kind of, you know.
That's all I can say.
Sarah, what do you think?
Sorry?
No, I was just looking for your thoughts, too.
Oh, um, I don't know, I think the 22nd, that's really, um, I mean, I still like half-day PDs, some of them, but if it doesn't, it's not really helping the situation, then.
I will say, though, half-day PDs, just speaking from parents that have younger children, you now create more issues in fine childcare.
That's why we went back.
That's why we did, that's one of the reasons, too, that we went back.
For teachers' sake.
For the solution, in particular, talking about.
If we surveyed the community, January, nothing would be ideal, but finding the childcare in those days, because now we're gonna have four of them, right?
Right, so then you have, then you have the three full-day PD days plus four half-days, so it's seven days disrupted right now, it's the four.
A lot of other districts do it every single month, they have a half-day every single month.
Which can help with scheduling kids' appointments and having.
A lot of districts have a lot of half-days.
They do, that's what I was saying.
My kid's school growing up had every Thursday was a half-day, and I had to find daycare for just that block of time, and you can imagine what it's like just for three hours every week to find daycare.
I can.
My other worry about April 10th and May 5th half-days, that's during the MCAS calendar, so that's two last days that we could.
And that's tough sometimes.
I've got a weird idea. What if we had a teacher work day on the 18th? We did, we did, so we did one day on a holiday, and take rush to shun, and then if you don't want to eat, two half-days, we have a teacher work day on the 18th, but in that day is for IEP meetings.
Sorry, what's the?
On the 18th?
June 18th.
Can you schedule all the IEP meetings?
Not all of them, but, you know, like.
Oh, end of year.
End of year, right, the end of the year.
Yeah.
Like, it's like, I'm gonna hate that day.
Seriously.
Don't, don't, yes, just, there'd just be a couple of them.
What would we do?
The marathon, I mean, look, the Select Board holds a budget hearing on a Saturday now, and they go through all their budgets in like eight hours.
I'd go fairly efficient if we went that way. Yeah, I'm not sure everybody loves Saturday.
But it's something, it's something.
I'm pretty sure that's loving the Saturday.
No, 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 hold on, I'm not actually suggesting it's Saturday, I'm just at least suggesting.
If we do that the 18th, what does that implicate?
The last student day would be the 17th.
Okay. So we're making up the 180 days.
Yeah, we're losing a day.
We're losing a day of.
We're still going to school January 2nd.
What?
If last student's day is 17, we're still going to school January 2nd, we have one less student day.
You've got two half-PD days, you've got.
Oh, we're going with that.
You've got a PD day on a holiday, that should be 180 days.
A PD day on which holiday?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna volunteer rush to shun.
I didn't know, no.
Speaking currently, his name's Jewish, Dan, it's not, just 'cause you're Jewish.
You can't do a federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday, yeah.
It's a federal holiday.
But let's go back to.
First state or federal.
I get the statement, two half-days are not a, are a full day, but that's not true, we need to have four half-days to make up one PD day?
So it's, when it was four half-days, it was a little bit over what we're getting now. The teachers agreed to give that up, because what we're gaining by the efficiency of getting all these groups together has been more beneficial for parents and all staff, and then less disruptions for students, those four half-days, like I said, that just adds, so.
All right. No, these are any better, how about we just get rid of April vacation?
Oh, my gosh.
And just do, we can't, instead, we already have February vacation, we get rid of that, then we, again, a couple of days, what do we need it for?
Let's just close the schools.
Cynthia.
I mean, I don't know, nobody wanted to go with my March pilot, so.
To be fair.
Yeah.
If we do that, we need feedback from the community.
Did we talk about this last year?
We didn't listen to, we didn't listen to surveys anyway, why are we gonna seek more feedback?
I'm listening very closely to the community, and I would wanna hear from them.
But that was the March one.
I guess we're coming down, I get it, Dawn, Sarah does not like me on this one, at least, June 22nd, least disruptive.
It's, it's a crappy year.
It is a crappy year, I mean, let's chalk it up to that.
I don't think we've found any better solutions.
I know.
I suggest we just stick with the schedule proposed, and revisit the following year's schedule a lot earlier.
Well, yes, that should be with the vote.
And a lot earlier.
That should be with the vote.
The schedule proposed, do you mean the one where we end school on June 18th?
The 22nd.
And we, and we hold school on January 2nd, the one that I'm holding in my hand is possible.
No, the one that has us going to school on January, no, sorry, no school on January 2nd.
Yeah, I don't know where the.
I haven't.
Where is the one where no school on January?
So I have not given you that draft.
I don't think we have.
You wanted me to show you where the half-day PDs are.
I don't think we have.
No, you don't, so we would just take, we would, the.
You're confusing everyone.
January 2nd now becomes a day off, and then that moves the final day to June 22nd.
It's the one that says draft be, I'll tell you.
Okay.
What about a teacher work day for IEPs on the, on the 2nd?
That's not PD.
No.
It's not PD, no, it's not.
But what about all teachers?
That's all, that doesn't.
There's a lot of teachers that don't have to attend IEP meeting, no.
That would still end school on the 22nd.
Still have a school day.
But you'd be, but, whatever.
Dan, you called this a grenade before, but if we got rid of non-federal holidays, and maybe gave excuse absences to students who need to observe.
Can we just talk about the high school schedule?
Can we do it?
Next year.
I think that, I would recommend that they say longer conversation.
Throw that out there.
And I think, I think it needs to be, you have to engage the community more on that, and really get some feedback. And while it might sound ideal that we're gonna give excused absences, I think you have to understand some of the ramifications of that, like games might still be scheduled, practices might still occur. Um, don't worry, everything's fine if you miss, I just think, I feel there could be some pressure, and maybe you'll decide to do that anyway, but I think you should engage the community before you do that.
And it does come down to, if not enough people show up.
And I just wanna say, in the time that I've been on here, we've done that probably at least three times, since I've been on the school committee, where we've engaged with, you know, doing surveys, I know Dr. Cuska has one that you just did, like, what, a year ago or something, where he asked about this? And it's, everything becomes a kind of non-conclusive, like, everybody has their own pocket, so it's pretty split in very strong opinions, but there's no consensus.
Depends on the year.
So that makes it, it's paralyzing, like, you can't move the needle if we're all kinda, yeah, so it's, it is a little frustrating.
This year sucks.
Wait, so make a motion for something.
I will make a motion.
Frank, make a motion that we go to school on the 2nd, and then we get out on the 22nd.
You mean, no, there's no school on the 2nd.
No school on the 2nd.
What did I just say?
It's a go-to.
What time is it? All right.
I am gonna make a motion to amend, not the schedule, I think the one that's on the draft.
It's the one that's V3.
The one that's V3, marking January, Friday, January 2nd, as a day off for parents, or students and teachers.
Yeah.
And ending the school year on June 22nd, Monday, 2026.
But V3 has it ending.
You don't, you don't want V3, you don't want V3.
I want the one that we reviewed last meeting.
Yeah, it's the same one that I had, it's the one from last year.
It's the one we were looking at, except changing January 2nd to day off, June 22nd the last day.
Sarah has to vote on this, can we make sure she knows what schedule we're voting on?
To be fair, I don't know if we do.
In the agenda.
So what is, so what is, the motion is to have no school on the 2nd, and push the last school day to the 22nd.
Yes.
Sarah, did you get that?
Maybe it's V2.
Keep all other.
All other stays the same.
All other holidays, PD days, stay the same.
All other holidays and PD days stay the same.
Correct.
Right, all you have to do is vote the beginning and last day of school, so you don't have to vote PD.
We already voted the first day, we just have to vote the one.
Okay, so, the motion is to make the last day of school June 22nd on purpose.
Monday, June 22nd.
Yes, on purpose, 2026.
Okay.
Moved by Cynthia, let's go, Frank.
2nd.
Okay, that requires a roll call vote, Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Hillary, yes.
See?
Joe?
Just me.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
No.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So, we have something.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's not like the happiest.
Not always gonna get the yes, guys.
I know. It's a crappy year, crappy year.
All right, hold on, moving on to the next curious subject, let me just.
Programs and studies, is that where we are?
Our whole time spent on this section was on the.
Oh, oh my God, Mr. List is on our schedule to talk about this again? I was wondering why you're still here.
Did you not look at the schedule, the agenda?
I did, but I thought it was just like a.
You still should know.
It's very much.
This is easy, bro.
It's good stuff, this is good stuff?
Hold on.
Good, I'm so sorry for still here.
Do you have it, like, is it, did you have it electronically for Sarah?
It's up, I think.
Yeah, please.
No, it's up.
Why are you doing that?
Yes. I know, that was cruel and unusual. Let's just make Jess do all the IEPs in one day.
One day.
Seriously, that was crazy.
We'll bring air conditioning.
Let's get to the front.
Seriously, you're bringing air goes wrong?
The school, they won't be.
Never are.
Are you gonna walk this, or do we just ask?
No, it's not.
It's not gonna be called the IEPs on the same day.
Where, where is micro now, AP micro?
It's all explained, I'll explain.
Oh, okay.
Is it showing them all now?
Let's go.
All right, so, a couple of things, so, what you're looking at here are mostly, like, name changes, and some movement in the program of studies, so I'll just very quickly, like, these, something like, the first is Intro to Global City, the CP1 level already exists, they're adding an honors level to it, so that's just adding a level to the class that runs concurrently, so it's not a new class, it runs at the same time. A lot of times in your fine arts department, you are running classes based on your hire and who you have in that position, the teacher left at the start of the school year, we hired a new teacher, and his background is more in graphic design and graphic arts, and marketing-type work, and so, actually, that is going to connect with our, the Innovation Pathways Business Program, so be able to offer classes there, those are classes that existed already, we're just bringing those back into being offered at the high school. The AP Economics, so.
Nice.
When you have the AP Economics, either micro or macro, that has lived in our business, I mean, in our math department, but those are actually listed under Social Studies, as, who actually is the license to teach them, so that's just being, the class still exists, it just is different header, it's under Social Studies.
Okay.
So that's going to, that's where, that's just a change in department listing. The English 1112, so what, if you look at the middle column there, it was four different classes that students all took over two years, they run in a cycle, to prepare students for what's next in their lives, and so, right, so here it'll be an English 1112, so instead of just having those four classes cycle, it's just English 1112, and that follows up on a change from last year, where the English classes, there were a lot of different senior English classes you could take, they all had different names, and they combined and made English 12, so this just follows in that same vein. The essay writing, that class, that, you know, that's the class that is the requirement for the end of sophomore year, it's a name change, the foundations of writing, because that's really what it is, it's not really just essay writing, it's really about note-taking strategies, different types of writing, academic writing, what's expected of students throughout their time in high school, and so that's, that's the name change. The, and then as you go down, you can see the next two, they're listed with the acronym PLTW, so we were very excited, I think Dr. Cuska shared it, that we got a grant for PLTW, I would compare PLTW classes, if you imagine like AP, AP is a network, as it's a curriculum, then there are a network of teachers and trainings that exist, and we'll be offering classes through PLTW, and said, and our teacher has gone through PLTW training, the grant funds equipment, funds training for teachers, and so those are changing to the names that exist through the PLTW program. So we already offered architecture technology, now it's civil engineering and architecture, because that's the PLTW name for it. Same thing for Intro to Engineering and Design, then the Principles of Physics, those are name changes, Forensics is a name change, again, the PLTW work, just a name change. What's, I think, what's nice about this is, these are classes that we've offered here at Halsen for a long time, this then will create eventually, as the grant moves forward, pathways for students in this, so they can take, you know, an intro class and then move on to the next level of the next, and so, that's where the biomedical science classes will change names, that's those two, again, climate change, Climate Solutions versus Climate Campaign, we talked about the civic actions before, and the financial literacy, and then the final one is the only new class that came along with the, with the grant, that we haven't offered as the Principles of Engineering, and it's really a spin-off of the Intro to Engineering, and so you start with the intro, and then you move on to the Principles. We had done it together in our class, but it's broken off here, so those are the name changes there. Something else that I couldn't really write out, because we don't have the signed agreement yet, but we are going to have access to the entire, I think I'd shared this before, the entire course catalog of UMass Dartmouth online.
Yeah.
Students will be able, I'm waiting on the documentation from UMass Dartmouth, there was a meeting that we had earlier in the year, and we said we needed to just wait till our program of studies, and so I'm just waiting on the final documentation from them, but we're gonna be able to offer students the opportunity to take online classes, three credits will cost $540 total, and those will be, those are transferable credits, it's a four-year, yeah, it's a huge bargain, it's a huge bargain, and then part of the grant that we got is money to offset for students who can't necessarily afford the $540, we'll have some scholarship money available for students who can't afford that. Another, sorry.
Can I just ask, is that, can you take that on top of your regular course load, too?
Yes.
Or is it run simultaneously during, during the school day, how does that work?
So, the way it works now for our online classes is that we require, in our current schedule, we require students to take it as a part of their schedule.
Okay.
In the AB model, again, they would be a class that they, that they could take, but it places to it differently, I think one of the cool parts about this, actually, is that students can take summer classes as well and get credit, and still that $540, so there's the ability not only to take the, the classes during the school year, which are online classes, but also take summer classes, maymaster classes, so they'll have lots of opportunities to do that, so that's a really neat partnership there. The Innovation Pathways Business, we should hear tomorrow, but we were invited to a seminar for people who got the grant, we just haven't gotten the official, we've got the grant yet, but we were invited to the, except, we were invited to the, was for people who are receiving the grant, so I'm hopeful.
They gave it away.
Is somebody's spam folder somewhere?
Yeah, I looked, but I, it was very, we weren't sure what to do with it, because we were like, do we sign up for it, like, or did we get this by accident, but supposedly we'll hear it tomorrow, but what that does is, well, the state has different pathway programs for high school students, and the one that we're starting with is our business program, and so students will have, right now, students take business classes, it's kind of random, you just, you take them throughout, here, students will be able to start and go through a pathway through business, starting with an Intro to Business class, then a Management Systems class, then they have classes in Entrepreneurship, classes in Marketing, Graphic Design, and then it ends with a more extensive internship, like, we have a great internship program, and Ms. Stone does an amazing job in finding internships for our students, and so anybody who's still up and listening, we're looking for partners for, you know, our students who are gonna be part of this program, to do internships in business, and we chose business, because it's sort of a wide swath, we thought we'd be able to find partnerships, where some of these pathways, we talked about, like, manufacturing, like, that's a harder thing to find, so we wanted to be able to bring in as many students as possible, so students will be able to follow through in that pathway, and it ends with, as I said, that internship, and then a capstone, where they're doing a full project that they then present to the community. Additionally, as part of it, the UMass Dartmouth, we're not eligible for what's called Early College, that just requirements that our district doesn't meet, and so, what we're gonna be able to do is, if you take, like, that management, the Management System, MIS, Management Systems class, that whole class will be eligible for the college credit as well. Our teacher then works with a professor who teaches that class, ensures that it aligns with what we teach, our teacher teaches it, the professor's available for students who want access, but, and then every student in that class will be eligible to get college credit as well, and we have, as I said, we have money in the grant to help support students who may not be able to afford the $540 for those classes, so, that's it, it's good stuff.
Thank you, that's great.
Yeah.
It's very exciting.
That's all that's happening, so, and I know there might have been other questions that folks had about, you know.
Yeah, do you wanna ask, I mean, the program of studies is about the change, we're going to the high school's schedule, do we, any questions about things that have come up?
You mentioned the number of courses juniors and seniors are, would be required potentially, is that, would that be in the handbook or the program of studies?
So, our program of studies lives online, as like, lots of different pages.
So you're not worried about that.
Within the program of studies, online, it does talk about the required classes, and graduation requirements there, so it kind of lives in both places, the piece about, one of the biggest concerns for students, you know, has been about taking eight classes, and so, in order, we, you know, what was being talked about is having, saying to students that a junior or senior would only be required, or they could, if they want to take eight, but would only be required to take seven credits, and they could use the other time to study, I know that was a concern, and as we think about, and listen to students about some of their concerns, that was, was one of them, so, wanting to address that, and these, and most schools that run the AB-type schedule, students are, most students take eight credits, but students have the opportunity to do seven, if they want, so that was just something that, you know, we had talked about.
They just don't get enough credits to graduate. Sorry, sorry, Susan.
I just didn't know that he won.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that is something.
Yeah, yeah, we have to vote on the program of studies.
With that other piece or not, I bet.
Yeah, I mean, that, maybe, I didn't know folks, I would have questions about that, but that was a question as well, is requiring juniors and seniors to have seven credits, versus eight.
They're gonna meet their requirement for graduation, right?
Easily?
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, like, if, if they're meeting the criteria that we've already set for graduation.
Yeah.
Then I don't know if it.
The way we work our credits, like, I was talking to a parent the other day, they were like, well, my kid has 13 electives they have to take, like, it's, you know, if you take the right classes, freshman, sophomore, junior year, you have a senior year that's, that's pretty.
Which allows opportunities to try new things if they want to.
Well, that's where, right, that's where you get to. Well, that's where, right, that's where you get to do all these cool electives that we have and the internship programs and take part in senior projects. That's why we have such a robust program, because our seniors are able to do those, those pieces there. But, you know, just in thinking about some of those students who are loading up on some of their APs and doing that, some time in there to study, because it will be different for them. And we do have to acknowledge that.
Yeah.
That this will be different than what they're used to, especially for our juniors and seniors who have had this schedule for, you know, for a few years now, so, the current schedule, so.
Yeah.
So you've been doing a lot of work over the last few weeks on, on things. Where do things stand? I mean, I think earlier you said you've got the schedule built out, the backend and everything.
So the backend is built up. So all of the, the work that our, our counselors and Dr. Coliff did in order to make sure that everything was ready, the scheduling process, what they were able to do was, was have it run in the same way that students have done in previous years. Our, our incoming ninth graders, their process will start on Friday for picking classes. And they've been able to actually clean up a lot of, just over the years, things get messy on the backend of, of school management systems. And so they, that work has been done. I've been working with individual teachers to alleviate concerns over storage and supporting that work. I met with Mr. Blood over the ceramics, and we, we talked about the kiln and making, and you know, his confidence in, in having enough supplies and support and space to do that. Ms. Balker with marine bio and making sure that we have the right, the fish tanks and what room they're going to go into so that, you know, she can run her classes as she likes. So all of that is being done. And we're, we're, you know, we're, we're in a, in a, in a place, in a good place with the, sort of the backend technical aspects of, of the schedule. And I think I shared before, we have 330 students who are fully, like, picked their classes. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but what happens is that, like, sometimes a kid doesn't pick an English class, or a kid doesn't pick an elective. And so what happens over the next couple of weeks is that the counselors look through, go into classes, small groups, make sure students are picking their, picking correct, picking what they need to. And then they will, you know, start to call students down, oh, you forgot to pick an English class, you forgot to pick a science class, and take part in that. You know, we're running things just like we did last year. We have, we have an acceleration process for kids in math, because that's a popular thing to do. The override process, all of that is, is, is working as it usually does at this time for the scheduling, the scheduling process.
But it's 330 kids of about 600, right? Because it's just the ninth or 11th grade.
It's three, three thirty out of 600, correct? Because ninth, because incoming ninth hasn't started yet. But that's, as I said, it's not crazy because you have, as I said, like, the kids, you know, a kid misses a, an elective or a gym class or something like that. So that's like fully, like, everything is perfect in the, in the system. And then we still have, you know, I know a student asked before about extending, that if the window, if we need to, we could absolutely extend that window. But we still have, you know, our counselors are still pushing into, to classes to get kids all signed up. And then, as I said, the incoming ninth grader will start on Friday, 10:00 a.m.
What are other space constraints, like, science labs and things like that?
So the way with that, we're working with that is, you know, one of the things that we can do on the backend of Power School, which has been an issue, you know, when you have the four classes running, is every day, is that everything gets sort of, becomes a traffic jam of space. We're able to do some work on the backend so that as Power School schedules, you know, it's putting one teacher here, but then not that same period. So we're dealing with eight periods versus four periods when to place those classes. And so that's how you kind of get around some of those space constraints that we have. And, you know, luckily, Power School is able to do a lot of that work. I, I know that Dr. Coliff and Ms. Taylor and Ms. Andrews were able to do a lot of that backend work to help, you know, ensure that we're able to, you know, do that puzzle of, of where classes are during each period.
There was an ask to extend the enrollment timeline, which you answered very quickly, yes. Will there be an official, I guess, decision and/or communication?
Yeah, so I'm meeting with, so I'm having class meetings with, next week with folks. And then our plan is tomorrow, because the counselors will have done their pushing into classes, is to look at where we are, look at all of our data, look at where we are, and then make a determination. A lot of times, I mean, I've been through scheduling processes for many years, you make those windows tight because you want, you know, what the folks get it done. If you, if you make it a month long, it's.
Totally agree. With the change, though, the quick, I mean, it was.
Yeah.
Don't want to use the word quick, but it was, it was changed, it happened recently. And I think there's a lot of stress, as we've heard.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that would be one thing that wouldn't solve it necessarily, but it would help well.
Yeah, so we have, we have it built in that we can, you know, if we need to extend, we can. And so it's, you know, that's something that we have, it's, it still has another week left in the scheduling process, so we'll have.
Next Friday is the last day.
Next Friday technically is the last day. And if we need to, you know, what we do is look at it, talk to kids, have those meetings, and then extend it if necessary, yeah.
Just because if we were to vote to require students to only carry seven credits during their junior and senior year, or senior year only, they could still take eight credits.
Yes.
And majority of our, I mean, the majority of our students will, I mean, they, these are, you know, academically minded kids, and they, and they end up, you know, the kids like doing the senior projects, the internships. And one of the things that any, any year-long schedule will allow us to do is to extend sort of the opportunities for students to explore and, and take on internships. So those take up, those can, they can choose to have, like, right now, those are like one term. So it's just that quick, one term, one class. So this is something they can extend over the semester, over the year. But yeah, students can take eight credits.
I don't, do we have to vote? I don't know if we have to vote on that. We vote on our graduation requirements. I don't know if we have to vote on, you know, how many classes students take.
It would just be part of the program of studies. If you vote, if you vote on the program of studies with the changes that he's recommended tonight and that addition, it would just be a vote in entirety.
It's just once we vote on something, then that we have to vote on it every time if we're going to be changing schedules, right? I'm just saying, like, I voted for the, I mean, obviously the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know what you're saying, yeah.
I don't know if we want to hold off on that.
Harst those together. Do you know what I'm saying?
Am I going to hold off on that one?
Yeah, we can just vote for the program of studies.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Just the document I gave you, yeah.
Yes.
Any more questions? Mr. List?
Nope.
Any other things you think we should know, issues you might want to address?
I mean, as I said, you know, part of the goal was to, to build this backend so that we can have, you know, confidence for the, for the students in, in what they are, that their schedules will work, you know, in this system. And they'll be able to take the credits they want and the, the classes they want and that. So we will, you know, that we're confident in.
No, we just don't take it over here. The, the agenda does not say vote the program of studies. I'm not sure, we missed that.
I think we can just discuss whether we approve it, we can think about it, we can put it on for a vote the next time.
I don't have any issues. No, no, it's my fault.
Because we don't have, there's no vote on.
No, so we're.
But if you, if you are, if you can demonstrate that you're okay with it.
I'm in favor. We are all in favor of the study presented.
I'm in favor of it as well.
And we'll read it as a vote.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll get it on as a, as a vote next time.
For next week.
Is he done?
Yeah.
Oh, I, no, we got to get you back for something.
Yeah, I don't think.
Does he have to talk about TECA?
No, that's items and information.
Oh, good.
Yeah. All right. Are you, okay, good. All right, so move on to our, our 2026 budget update, which we can keep relatively quick in the sense of we basically, well, there have been some changes, but.
Good changes, though.
Good changes. Lower number changes.
Lower numbers.
Let's go.
No stack impact.
Oh, it's only 10 of nine, come on, look at this.
Damn, we've been here five hours.
This version's always the one that's.
I'm pretty sure that Hillary gets up at like 5:30. Is that about right? Okay. Hillary.
Oh, Hillary, oh, I thought you said Larry. I'm sorry, we have, we have a possum Larry, so.
It's okay. Do you work from home?
Joe's got to go.
Okay, so, um, quick budget update. Not quick budget update, budget update for our recommended budget. If you could, I guess.
Skip to the slide.
Skip to the slide. So skip to slide four.
Five, Joe.
So the, the budget subcommittee voted, met this afternoon, or this evening, whenever, and voted to officially set our recommended budget to $44,511,069, which is a $1.5 million increase rounded, over 3.58%. However, what? There's no however. Our level service budget that we voted, which we'll get into in a second, is 3.26%. Next slide, please. So as we looked into the budget, and we're going to get into sort of our recommendations for budget reductions to get us to this number, we were looking specifically at enrollment trends and the, and the changes in enrollment. And, you know, one of the things that sticks out to you, obviously, is the, is the decline in the Placentino enrollment. However, the good news about that is, while last year was a, while last year was a, certainly a low for kindergarten enrollment at 141, the, the work of the administration and sort of just gauging where things are, that we're, we still haven't closed, we don't, where are we with kindergarten enrollments?
They just had the presentation the other night.
This week, yeah.
And we're in the process of complete enrollment.
So based on the best data we have today, we're expecting 170 students next year. That's where we're sort of projecting. So that would be a nice, significant increase, though still below the kind of the 200-ish average that we, we normally had per class. And so one of the things that you'll see as we look at the budget is how do we sort of deal with some of the shifts in, in enrollment. So if you go to the next page, please. So to get to the, the 3.26, we are recommending, based upon the, the administration's recommendations, a reduction in sort of our open paraprofessional positions.
Unfilled.
Unfilled positions. So these are not, there are no people there, they're just unfilled positions that, due to shifts in enrollment, as well as student needs, we don't believe will be necessary next year. And so that's going to be four unfilled positions. There are still going, there's still, the last number I guess we had is, we currently have nine openings. And so there will still be significant, you know, room for positions. And, and look, obviously, we have a legal and requirement, so if we ever needed more, we would have to, to do that. So this is more just a budgeting exercise than anything else. Next, we're expecting to see $165,000 in savings from retirements that were not built into the original budget. And so what this is, is not a position, but is a, if a person retires and they're in a high step, high lane, they're replaced by somebody in a lower step, lower lane. This is the delta between the, the cost of the retiring teacher versus the, the new teacher. And this happens every year. And we had a few additional retirements over the last few weeks, and that's the, the number that we're at right now. Then there are enrollment-driven position eliminations of 2.5 positions. And we're still working, given that we haven't had kindergarten enrollment yet, and still seen some, some shifts in some additional staff, either resigning or retiring, so that we haven't fully agreed to what the exact positions will be. However, it would be someone who is retired or resigned, their position would be filled by someone already in the district in a spot that would not be, that we don't need because of enrollment shifts. They would be offered a position in, in a different spot or different class.
So like, if a kindergarten teacher was leaving that's been in the district for 20 years, and then we don't have enough kindergartners, but we can take that teacher and have them go to second grade.
No, they left.
So they left, so.
No, it's, we like, so, so, if a fourth grade teacher retired.
So a second grade teacher, yeah.
Or let's just keep it in the same.
Doesn't matter.
Whatever. So a fourth grade teacher has retired, we don't need as many third grade teachers.
Right.
A third grade teacher who's to fill the fourth grade position, and the third grade position is just not backfilled.
Right.
So everyone keeps.
For example, yes. For example.
And I, and that, I don't have any.
Right, right.
That's real, we haven't made aids, so I'm just throwing.
And this is before we do things like school choice.
This is before we have it, we have not built in any school choice, we have not.
It hasn't opened yet.
Correct.
As noted in bold, it will not result in any reduction of current staff.
Right. So as I said at the beginning of the meeting, as I say now, and I will continue to say over and over and over again, there will be no staff reductions due to budget or due to high school schedule. And then just finally, we hadn't built in initially into the, into the, into the budget lane changes. We now have a better idea of what exactly the cost of lane changes are, just for those at home who are still watching at 10:15 at night. In, in the contract, when a teacher retains a higher level of education, they change lanes, which is a increase in, in costs based on their additional education. So I think that what's important here is that, you know, in 2024, when we were going through the override process, we committed to getting to 3.25% for our budget. At the time, we said that there were a number of different ways that we would be able to get there. This was the way that sort of, we weren't talking about if there were other ways, but this was sort of the way that I expected to get there, which was through turnover and enrollment shifts. And so I think it's a, it's a really big deal that we were able to, to meet our commitment and do so without any, you know, negative impacts on, on current employees, while also maintaining our student, our student-to-staff ratios, you know, everything like that. I mean, I think if you, if you look at the news, a lot, there are districts that are laying off teachers left and right. It is, is quite bad. And Hollison is in a really good position, largely because of the support of the community last year with the override, as well as good fiscal management over the years.
This is the outcome when the community comes together. It came together last year, we got, we solidified the override, and we kept our promise.
Correct. Or commitment.
Commitment. We made a commitment to our community partners that we would come in at 3.25, and we're doing it.
Correct. So the next slide, please. So the next slide just sort of shows it all kind of together. There are, and we'll get to the breakdown, we've reduced the priority needs by 60,000 to 139,000. The underlying level service budget is 3.26. So met our commitment, I'll, I'll take the, the one basis point, and if need be, I'll, I'll put it in there. But overall budget request right now is 3.58, and that's what we will take into the finance committee and sharing with them this, this breakdown. But as you can see, this is in line with sort of, you know, where we were expecting to, to go. And it is, you know, we've obviously had more information since our override projections last year, Dr. Cusco's budget back in February at this point. So, moving on, this, we can pass this one, I just updated it for the new payroll number, but it is, is the same. We're gonna also, we'll get this posted to the website, too, so anyone at home can, can pull it up. This is a very busy sheet. I think that the takeaway, though, from it is, if you look at the percent increase this year for, for payroll over the prior two years, we are at a lower increase this year than we have been over the past three years. All those, the prior three years are inclusive of any, last year, we actually did, you know, at least one, you know, job elimination, you know, people, there were people that were, were cut through the budget. Obviously not happening this year. But, so we've been able to see a lower budget than, than in the past, and it's a, a good story to tell.
And to remind, the last year, or this year. And to remind, the last year or this year, I guess, was at 4% COLA.
Last year was a 4% COLA. This is 3% plus $1,500 into new top step.
Next year will be the.
That's next, but this is the budget we're talking about.
Yeah, no, it's like, 3%, what's on the right.
The 3.72% is a 3% COLA.
Yep.
With $1,500 on the top step. But keep in mind that the 3% COLA does not include steps, does not include lanes.
And this is after all of that.
And that is, this is after all that.
All right, let's vote.
Well, we gotta go through priority needs. We got a couple, some more things.
No, we're just hitting the highlights.
No, we gotta, we gotta vote the priority needs and the prioritization of priority needs. Anyway, so since last week, working with, with Dr. Cusco and Dr. Jordan and Dr. Renard, we have sort of collapsed the 2.5 ELL positions across Miller and Placentino into 1.0. Now that those schools are operating on the same schedule, we hope that they can, they can operate with, with one higher at the same time. There's flexibility, if we need to, there's, there's flexibility to split that up. But that is the sort of top priority. That is something that we need for, to meet our legal obligations and, and so keep ourselves on, on sides. So that will be, that is our recommendation for the top priority need. Second is a, is a math tutor at Rams.
And the two signifies a footnote down here, partially due to the new math curriculum. It's obviously not two math tutors for that place.
No.
That's a priority. Hence the, the header.
One, two, three, yeah.
Then our fourth priority skipping is the, the high school academic development center tutor. The third priority would be the 0.25 FTE increase to the high school course and performing arts staff. And then just quickly looking at capital, a couple changes from last week as Mr. List and Dr. Jordan dug more into the cost of the needs for supplies for, for the high school schedule change. That number's gone up percentage-wise quite a bit, but, but still a relatively modest number. And so that's now 48,300. And then we added on, because I apologize, Mr. Cloud, I had forgotten your, your classroom technology and iPad fleet for October. So that's just on there. We're not voting on that tonight. But.
That will be in further a request for next.
That is anticipated to be a request for October. And then you don't have to go there, but the last slide is just our, it's just our.
Busy.
Busy, busy. I just put it there because that was what we talked, that is the exact same slide.
You can pull it up online.
You can pull it up online, and you can really dig into it. And please email me all the questions so that I can delete them. Kidding. So what we need to do tonight is we need to vote our capital request. We need to vote total budget, and then our, you know, the, the priority needs and with the prioritization list. So at this point, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to.
Why do we have to vote for the prioritization list? We can just vote for our number. Is that because if we had other funds, that we would actually then fund the other piece that we're missing, the bridge?
To give the, to give the finance committee sort of the knowledge of what our priorities are, so that if there are additional monies that we can potentially get them. The hope is that, you know.
Right. If, if we go and they say, well, we don't have the 139, but we can get to 124, I think it is important to, they typically ask us.
No, I know. I'm just articulating for the community to know why we do that.
Okay.
Okay. So first, I would like to entertain a motion. And, oh, keep in mind, so this, of the, of the capital, we're expecting that with the Wi-Fi upgrades at, at Rams and the high school at $75,000, of which we expect to get the $30,000 back. That $30,000 will go to our, our steakhouse dinner we have at the end of the year. No, seriously, it will go back to the capital fund. It is not ours. It is, it is back into the capital fund of the town, not, not our own.
But finance committee will keep that in mind when they.
The finance committee will include that thought when they, when they budget everything, yes.
It goes back to the municipality. I know, it's kind of a drag. It should just go back to our line.
You know what the worst part is? The worst part is any money that we have in, you know, our revolving accounts, the interest generated by that cash goes to the town.
Does it?
It does.
I didn't realize that.
We need to charge them for it.
No.
Well, it didn't.
We're all part of one municipality.
When interest rates were like, you know.
It's fine.
Yeah.
0.2.
And in addition to needing the Rams and high school Wi-Fi upgrades, another great reason to do it is because that maybe does exist right now.
Right.
It's not certain.
It's 40%.
Use those funds for something else that's needed in the district, right? I mean.
Right. Classroom technology, iPad fleet.
Or the town.
Or something else in the town. You know what I'm saying?
Can we power Wi-Fi for the town? Town Wi-Fi?
I'm gonna bury it in sidewalks.
Town Wi-Fi?
I would love sidewalks. It would be nice.
Anyway, so motion, I want to entertain a motion to, to accept the, the subpage recommendation for our capital request of $1,047,300 for, for May town meeting.
Moved by Cynthia.
1 million.
Second.
Too late. Just start voting.
Any questions?
No, I'm just, yes, I'm good.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, moving up to the priority needs, slide 12.
We're going out in order.
Entertain a motion to adopt this as our, as our priority needs and prioritization.
Moved by Cynthia.
Second.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, and I have a yes as well. Moving on, so I am doing small, no, anyway, that's not one. Moving on up. So I will entertain a motion to adopt our new budget request, which is reduced from the budget request we voted last week to $44,511,69.
Moved by Cynthia.
Second.
Go Frank.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah? And I am a yes. So we, we have a budget.
Excellent. That's nice.
Present that to the school committee, school, no, whatever that next committee is.
The finance committee.
That one.
I did want to say something regarding the budget, Dan, if you don't mind. I mean, we voted on.
What?
No, it's what, I mean, Jess is here. I did want to thank Jess for, and her team for all the work they did. I mean, special ed is always tricky from a financial perspective. It's always a red herring in, in terms of who comes in, who goes out, what services they need. And the creativity and thoughtfulness for, for our students has been incredible, while staying within a meaningful budget. Don't cringe, we just voted on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess, very much. That was well said, Frank. Why is she still here? All right, so we have a budget. Wonderful. And so just, well, it says on the agenda that our budget hearing will be April 3rd, small staff, who, our budget, our budget hearing will be on April 10th.
And again, this will all be posted.
And this will all be posted in.
Are we posted now officially?
We have, the, the budget note, the notice, I believe, has gone out.
It's posted.
Yes. So we are, we're good to go. So the last thing, well, I guess, no, technically two last things. So the math curriculum subcommittee. Hillary provided me with a document that is in your drive. She worked on with.
Ron Taylor and Karen Manning.
Okay.
And I also, I think I put in the timeline information for you to have theirs, and that's, I think I put that in there as well.
So we put together some guiding questions for the leveling, the math leveling subcommittee. Do you want me to read through all of each of them? Okay. What are the key findings and recommendations from the study group and the math curriculum review committee? How can the district provide opportunities for all students to succeed in math, considering their diverse learning styles and needs, while also ensuring access to advanced math opportunities in high school? What does student readiness for algebra mean, and how is it currently defined by Holliston Public Schools? How can we support more students in becoming ready for algebra by grade eight? How can we identify students ready for an accelerated pace in a way that is unbiased and equitable? How can the middle school math standards be compressed effectively without compromising rigor and depth of instruction? So based on that, we talked about gathering a group of no more than 12 people. That would include a middle school and high school administrator, middle and high school math teachers, and probably one elementary teacher. A school committee representative, which is myself, district administrator. We are also, we are hoping that Jerry Yell will be part of this group, and community representative. Ron is working on developing a brief questionnaire survey to start to elicit that staff and community representation. We also want to look at some key data, including MCAS, iExcel, and iReady, and high school math enrollment data, and look at that for different student groups. Look at the comparison of algebra pathways and instructional models in some of our neighboring districts, and look at the DESI math frameworks for grade six through eight and algebra. We're proposing a timeline of starting this spring and summer and meeting monthly, and then next year, meeting twice a month or as needed by reviewing findings from the subcommittee, the previous curriculum review and study group, reviewing some of the current model and standards progressions proposed by DESI, researching the algebra pathways and instructional models in our neighboring districts, analyzing the math student data in Holliston that I talked about, and then coming up with a recommendation by January to the school committee for a middle school math pathways that includes an accelerated opportunity for students and addresses the scope and compression in middle school standards for the following year's implementation. Ron and Karen suggested January would be most helpful as they think about building out schedules and preparing teachers for the following year. And then following that, they would also like to develop some plans for professional development to support that area, communication to families on the different pathways for advanced math courses, similar to what you had said earlier, Cynthia, that if students are doing grade eight math in middle school, there are other pathways to get to calculus, but are we communicating that to our middle and high school families? And then the process for identifying the students for accelerated middle school math. Some of this work has already been started at the middle school, but looking to build on it and review.
Two questions, Hillary.
Yep.
Maybe three, actually. Over the summer, for a lot of the folks represented here, teachers, are they aligned to be attending over the summer months, or?
Yep, we worried about that as well. So we talked about getting the group together in the spring so that we are ready to go for next school year and hit the ground running, but also hoping to carve out a day or two. And I know Karen Manning will be looking at some ways to compensate teachers for their time outside of their instructional day.
Got it. Okay.
If we do that, yeah.
How can we keep the community involved? There's a lot of feedback on this, right? We've, we've heard a good amount throughout this process. Obviously, as you work through this, there's going to be different steps, milestones you guys reach, I would assume. How can we keep the community engage, not engage necessarily, but aware of what's going on? So we don't get to January, because we're really trying to solve for communication gaps, right? And it's, I'm super impressed with how we're thinking about this and doing this on a timeline that makes sense. But if we go dead from now until January, it's going to feel to the community, we rushed it and it's not aware, people weren't aware.
So Frank, what we can do is we can add it to the agenda under the other subcommittee.
Have some updates?
For updates. It doesn't need to be any crazy.
Yeah.
But just things that we're working on.
And Sarah, maybe we can also talk about in communication next year to, around communication to the community after school committee updates.
Maybe he's got a clarifying question. Is it you and Sarah that are on it, or just you as the one school committee rep?
I think I was the one that, did you, you had to vote two last time? I think there were two.
We did have you and Sarah. I'm okay with that. I'm also okay if you want to, want to take it, it's sort of more.
Thank you for saying that, because I forgot.
I thought it was two, but I just wanted to make sure, see how everybody feels about that. The other part, I, I think it might make sense to have two community representatives, too.
Yeah.
And I know we set a maximum. It wouldn't be a bad idea to set a minimum.
Yeah. And I, I think, I think maybe it's at the maximum, does it feel, 13? It's an odd number.
Sure. Okay.
So if this is a subcommittee, then it has to have a quorum.
Correct.
So you have to be mindful of that. And I know that there's some other committees that have had problems being able to meet, because they're not able to meet their quorum.
Something to make the folks aware of that are.
To be clear, moving from 12 to 13 does not change.
No, I'm just saying overall, even just with the 12, like that can be cumbersome. I'm just saying.
But you know, just moving from 12 to 13 doesn't actually change the quorum. The quorum will still be seven.
No, I, I know, but even, it doesn't matter. The 12 or 13 can still be hard to get.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. We do need a quorum. And we'll, we'll have to, once we have the, the, once we have the names, we'll submit them to, to the town clerk.
So, but, but I just have a question, Hillary, about just scope-wise. So did you talk about like goal, like your goal is to get algebra booked in eighth grade, but for what?
Well, the guiding questions.
I get the guiding questions, but then it's, that's fine. But like it says to, to improve, oh, sorry, support students to becoming ready for algebra in grade eight. But I don't wa, like, I don't know why that's the magic, why is that the magic number? Like, what's the whole goal as a K to 12 model? Like, why are we keeping it at that? Or is it just because you have to focus on the scope of just middle school? But at the same time, as I illustrated it earlier, like, there are pathways to get to calculus, whether you did accelerated math in middle school or you didn't. So is the goal for, I'm just asking open-endedly for you to ask the subcommittee or not, like, is that the goal? Is the goal for all kids to really have a pathway to calculus? Is that ultimately the goal? And if the only way they perceive that we can get there is making sure that all students have algebra? It's a, it's a question. It's not.
So we talked about kind of thinking about in terms of opportunity, like you're phrasing it, that kids have an opportunity to take those advanced courses, whether they start in eighth grade or later.
Correct.
But also looking at for students that are ready for accelerated pace in middle school, making sure that they have those opportunities, too. And then we kept this thinking about what we thought would be possible for next year. We tried to limit this to middle school, but we did talk about that there may be some questions or areas of focus that might arise out of this that, you know, Ron might want to look at for high school, or that maybe the elementary teacher might want to bring back to look at at Miller.
Additionally, depending on what schedule we end up with, certain schedules you, you make, are much more difficult to get to calculus if you do not get to algebra, have Algebra I in A3.
What's going to be the process to select some of these members of this committee, community representatives?
We need to draft a communication to, to the community about what we've done. And we need to solicit statements of interest, and then we'll.
Select what we did with the start.
Yeah.
Including the teachers?
I'm gonna let, I think we should let Karen, Rod, and Hillary sort of, sort of solicit, figure out how to solicit the teacher interest.
That makes sense.
Do we have two school committee members on this?
Yes.
Sarah?
We've decided.
Yeah, I think we voted that in the last meeting.
Are we in agreement to get two community representatives on it?
I think two's important. I think it's a lot. It's a lot to have one.
I'm also okay if, if we get, we do want to make sure that we have enough, you know, teachers represented on there. So if we needed to move one of the school committee members to a sort of a, an associate role or something, you know, sort of a.
This could allow up to seven teachers, the way we have it outlined right now.
Five. You have a middle school administrator, you've got three administrators.
We say teachers, but how many does that mean?
I don't, three administrators, two school committee members is five, two student representatives is seven.
13, so okay, six, because we did two community reps. Okay.
I was just saying, like, depending on.
Are you comfortable in a committee of 13? We're talking about six. Is that enough voice?
What was the size of the previous math survey committee?
Eighteen. The review committee was like 18 or 19, I think. And then the study group, I think, was six or seven, something like that.
The study group was six or seven.
Yeah. If I remember correctly.
Thank you for putting all.
This is, this is great. This is like, this is perfect.
I agree with what you presented.
This is, I wish we had this for start times.
Stop equating this to that. This is totally different.
If we had this, it might help.
Okay. So I will. So I will entertain a motion to create a leveling subcommittee of the Holliston School Committee with this scope of work and sort of setting this as the charge amended only to include 13 members.
Max of 13.
Max of 13, correct. Max of 13, yes. And really appreciate that, word of you, Karen, Ron, and I think we should definitely come up with a communication to get this out to the community and I look forward to seeing the work progress because I think this will be exactly what we need. So anyway, I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay. Okay, last, hopefully, quick item of business is, as we discussed, we'll reappoint the HSC bargaining subcommittee. I think when we spoke, it was going to be Dawn, Hillary and myself. Is everyone still good with that? Okay, so I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Sure.
Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Then we have a item of information, the overnight field trip, DECA Nationals.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware because normally when it's overnight field trips, you vote those, but there is language in the policy that if it was time sensitive, I can approve them, but that's why I wanted to come back and just share with you that the students will be attending DECA because when they win something, they don't have time, they have to start paying for the airfare and all that.
But we knew that when we approved.
Correct. So they will be, Ms. Kuhn and Ms. Roy will be shopping on the students. They leave for Orlando, Florida on April 25th and return April 30th. It's the fifth consecutive year students from Holliston DECA have competed in the international competition and my daughter and her DECA team will be there as well, so.
So who are you rooting for?
Both.
Okay. Back up to our consent agenda.
Oh, that's rude. Forgot we skipped.
What do we, we're gonna approve the three redacted executive session minutes?
Hold on, hold on, I'm almost there.
Almost there. So as they're getting there, just to be clear, at the bottom, it says that our next meeting will be the budget hearing on April 3rd. Budget hearing will be on April 10th. Watch, if you're signed up for the emails for our agendas, watch for those to see, we may have a meeting on April 3rd, there may be other meetings. If you don't know how to subscribe to agendas, for anyone still watching at 10:42, you go to townofholliston.us. At the top on the blue banner, there's a button that says subscribe. You hit that button and the whole list of options of things that you can subscribe to pop up. You put your email address in, you can get the town manager newsletter, you can get agendas for all the different boards and committees. I think there are a few other things that you can sign up for as well. And that way, anytime a meeting, agenda is posted of a meeting, you will get a, an email alert for it when the town manager newsletter comes out. I think there's also when the town manager's bi-weekly update gets sent out, so it's a very useful tool. We want to make sure that there are more than, I actually have to ask, but it was shared with us at the selectword meeting on Monday, there were only 92 people were getting the selectword newsletter, selectword agenda. I've been to check the school committee, we just want to make sure we're above that.
What about finance committee?
No one's watching. I can attest. But we want to be above them too. Okay, I'm...
You can't go on anymore, guys.
Okay, a goat, a sheep, and a...
Okay. Shh, two minutes.
Okay.
So I don't, that's not my collection of that.
So you want to hold the 213?
Not this one, the other.
But you want to hold the 1126. Are you okay with 1114 and 213?
I don't know if this one will work.
Yeah, these are the three, 1114, 1126 and 213.
The one that we're saying didn't. Hold on, this piece.
Okay. 1126.
I didn't actually read.
She wants to amend 1126.
For what?
Well, it's executive session, so I'm not going to talk about it.
Okay, so you know what? Approve 1114 and 213 if something's ready to vote on that and then the world won't end if we address it in a...
All right, so I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the executive sessions removed except for the redacted versions of November 14th and February 13th, November 14th, 2024 and February 13th, 2025, and those are approved for release.
Moved by Dawn.
Second.
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.